Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Good evening. I would like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, May 22, 2023. It is now six o'clock. And I will accept a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, public works, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, emergency communications, AFSMI Unit C.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by roll call?
Zalinski, aye.
Brown, aye.
Muscali, aye.
Taylor, aye, and we will return to open session. Okay, good evening. I would like to reopen the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, May 22, 2023. It is 6:36, and the Select Board is returning from executive session, where we discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, public works, and we discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, emergency communications, and we reached agreements in both collective bargaining sessions. So I would like to thank Susan Lumping and Peter Johnson Staub for working on those, for bargaining in good faith. Thank you. Okay, I would ask, please, that you silence your cellphones, and if anyone here is making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting, to please notify me as the chair. Thank you. Okay, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like to welcome Mr. Muscali to the board.
Thank you.
And at this point, we will reorganize the Select Board. I guess I'll...
We can take nominations.
Okay.
Yes.
So I would like to nominate you, Dr. Taylor, to be chair again. I think that you've done a great job in the last year, and we have a lot of really big changes coming up with the new police chief coming in, the new town manager, and I think some consistency amongst the board in that regard would be appropriate, and I think you've done a great job in the last year.
I'll second it. Are you still interested in...
I didn't even ask.
Well, that's a very good question, Mr. Brown. I will accept the nomination as chair. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry on.
Thank you.
If I may continue talking, I've enjoyed my time as vice chair in the last year, and I think that I've learned quite a, quite a deal about how things work, and I think that I would like to pass along that torch to Mr. Zalinski, so that he also has the experience to be vice chair and to learn some of the inner workings of the board, and so I would like to nominate Mr. Zalinski as vice chair.
What do you think?
Not gonna ask.
G D O.
Will you accept that nomination?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
I would second that.
Okay, Mr. Muscali, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all.
Thank you for keeping that going.
Okay, we will move on to proclamations. And the first proclamation is Outstanding Citizen of the Year for Reverend Nell Fields, and I would be happy to read the proclamation. Whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce annually acknowledges and pays tribute to a citizen of Falmouth who has made a lasting positive impact on the community through participation in a broad scope of activities and whose commitment to the town has been demonstrated by many years of service beyond his or her profession, and whereas Reverend Nell Fields is an exceptional citizen of the town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, and New England, well-known to all for her professional accomplishments and widespread contributions to the betterment of society, and whereas Reverend Nell Fields is a model citizen, admired and esteemed for successfully balancing her devotion to family with years of integrity, tireless civic participation and commitment to community progress, and whereas Reverend Nell Fields quietly works to build a better town, to build the physical and moral fiber of our youngsters, to man the action boards and committees so vital to all of our interests, to preserve Falmouth open space, to advocate for those without a voice, to work for attainable housing and protect the values and rich character of Falmouth Cape Cod, and whereas Reverend Nell Fields many accomplishments and contributions singularly and collectively and memorialized in the minds of those she has touched and chronicled on the pages of organizations across this town, and she continues to make a difference in the town of Falmouth, we do herein declare that the citizen, this citizen, is worthy of high praise and great recognition. And now, therefore, we, Nancy R. Taylor, Angelay Scott Price, Douglas C. Brown, Edwin Scott P. Zalinski II, and Robert P. Muscali, as members of the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do proclaim Reverend Nell Fields, Falmouth's 2023 Outstanding Citizen of the Year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And much congratulations to Reverend Nell Fields. She certainly deserves it.
Yeah, couldn't think of a better person.
Absolutely. Okay, second proclamation, Wear Orange Day.
I'll read this one, Madam Chair. Whereas gun violence has become the leading cause of death of children, and whereas the color orange honors the more than 100 people killed and the hundreds more wounded by gun violence every day in our country, and whereas Hadia Pendleton was a 15-year-old and an honor student, and whereas Hadia was shot and killed in Chicago in a case of mistaken identity a week after she performed at President Obama's second inauguration, and whereas Hadia's birthday is June 2nd, and whereas Wear Orange originated on June 2, 2015, on what had been Hadia's 18th birthday, and whereas her parents, Cleopatra Cowley Pendleton and Nathaniel Pendleton, picked the color orange to honor her and remind us that the color orange is what hunters wear to protect themselves, and whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day is observed nationally on the first Friday in June and the following weekend each year. Now, we, excuse me, now, therefore, we, Nancy R. Taylor, Angelay Scott Price, Douglas C. Brown, Edwin Scott P. Zalinski II, and Robert P. Muscali, as a Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim June 2, 2023, to be Wear Orange Day, and June 3 and June 4 weekend to be Wear Orange Weekend in Falmouth, Massachusetts. And witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, Monday, May 22, 2023.
Madam Chair, I'll move that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
I'm gonna have to buy something orange.
You don't have any hunting gear?
I don't.
Can I have one of those orange hats? Do I have any?
Find something.
Okay, we'll move on to recognitions.
All right, I'll wear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will take another one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, is that...
No, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. That's... Thank you.
Okay, recognitions. Any recognitions from the board?
I'd just like to recognize that this was May, was Police Awareness Appreciation Month, and, you know, Police Week. We didn't get to have that celebration, really, the way we usually do this year. I'd just like to make mention of my personal appreciation of our hard-working Falmouth Police Department, and I'm sure that's the case of all the board members and the public. So just a word of appreciation for all the hard work that they do and all the overtime hours that they've been working recently to keep us safe and protected. So I appreciate them.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other recognitions?
I'm just gonna put in a plug for the Rotary Club of Falmouth, which, along with Barbara Schneider and members of the Beach Committee, did a beach cleanup this past weekend at Goodwill Park and at Old Silver Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Muscali. Any other recognitions? Okay, announcements. Any announcements from the board?
Madam Chair, I have an announcement.
Yes.
So at our last Select Board meeting, I mentioned that the Noah Aquarium in Woods Hole was gonna be closed for some structural work, so the structural work is only gonna affect part of the building, so they're opening the aquarium, the downstairs part back up, so that is gonna be back open to the public, if not already, very soon. So you just won't be able to go upstairs and see behind the tanks.
Just in time for the season.
Just for signing.
Well, that's great. Anything else from the board? Okay. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay? Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion of the topic. Come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Jack Affarian. I'm the president of the Falmouth Line Club. First of all, congratulations, Nancy Taylor, on your reelection, and Robert Muscali, on your election. As a lot of you know, we run four races in the spring. We do it before the tourists come to town to get it out of the way. We get a lot of support from the Select Board, from all the municipalities in town, and without all of that support, we never would be able to do it. And a great example of that support happened yesterday, yesterday morning, was our last race, our fourth race, our surf drive mile. As you know, when it rains overnight, surf drive sometimes gets a little bit of water on it. We woke up to about a foot of water on parts of our course. I contacted Peter, Peter McConerty, DPW, and asked him if there was anything he could do about it. In no time, he sent a crew there with some pumps and pumped out the water off of surf drive enough so that we'd be able to conduct a safe race. That race, in that race, there are a lot of little kids that run it. It's a family-type race. We would not have been able to put that event on if it wasn't for Peter and the DPW, and that's a great example of the support we get from the town, and we totally appreciate it, and we may not have been able to conduct the race if it was not for DPW.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even on a Sunday.
Thank you for letting us know.
Only Sunday morning.
Thank you.
It's awesome. Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we will move into our hearings. Our first hearing is a wetlands dock hearing. Logan Huffman, 29 Juniper Point Realty Trust.
Would you like me to...
Preliminary report?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
I still have to do that?
I'll keep doing it.
At least tonight.
It's the easy part of the job. I'll take it. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetlands Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth, on Monday, May 22, 2023, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Logan Huffman for permission to rebuild the existing licensed dock in the same location and orientation as it currently exists, located at 29 Juniper Point Road, Woods Hole, MA. Area affected is Great Harbor. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Office of Select Board. Per order of Select Board publication dates Friday, May 5, 2023, and Friday, May 12, 2023, Falmouth Enterprise.
Okay, and I will go to Mr. Johnson Staub for any comments, and then we'll go to the representative for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, the applicant is seeking to rebuild an existing dock in Great Harbor, as the hearing notice says. The application has been approved by the Conservation Commission, and the Shellfish Constable has raised no concerns.
Thank you. Good evening. If you'd introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Michael Bosselli. I work for the firm of Falmouth Engineering Incorporated, and we represent Mr. Huffman, the property owner at 29 Juniper Point Road. I'm sharing with you an aerial photo that shows his property in the dock in question here. This is just south of the Steamship Authority facility, which you can see at the top of the frame. You can actually see a ferry coming in. So the waterfront on number 29 Juniper Point has the benefit of a stone jetty and a stone revetment at the waterfront of the property, and on the very end of the stone jetty is a timber pier. And that pier has the benefit of a Chapter 91 license. It's been in existence for decades. It's in a state of disrepair. Here's a, here's a view of it from the, the end of the stone jetty. You can see some of the decking has been lost. One of the pilings has been lost. Here's a different view, again, the end of the stone jetty. And then there's one further back. In the background is the Woods Hole Passage. Now, the plan shows the stone jetty and the stone revetment at the waterfront, and the details associated with the fixed pier repairs are shown and labeled on the plan. There is a typical cross-section. It'll be supported by 10-inch pilings, and it has typical timber framing and decking. So it's, it's unsafe and really unusable at, at the moment. In fact, Chapter 91 mandates that these be maintained when licenses are issued. So we first went to the Conservation Commission, filed a notice of intent. They reviewed it and issued a favorable order of conditions, and since this is work within a wetland, we're required to apply to you for a special permit, and that's why we're here. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I did notice rebuild the existing licensed dock in the same location and orientation, so it really is a rebuild and repair.
Correct.
Questions from the board?
I was just gonna clarify. The same footprint, no extension?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Comments from the public on this request for license? Okay, hearing none. I'll accept a motion to close the hearing. So moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any conversation among the board?
I think rebuilding, repair's pretty straightforward.
I would say so, too. I would move approval.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the application. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our second hearing, wetlands dock hearing, Falmouth Holdings Corp., 278 Scranton Ave.
The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetlands Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, May 22, 2023, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Falmouth Holdings Corp. to modify term, condition three, a special permit issued November 10, 2022, to read, quote, "This special permit for construction shall lapse three years from the date of issuance, November 10, 2022, if construction has not begun by that date except for good cause," end quote. Once so commenced, the work may be completed in phases over two or more years at 278 Scranton Ave, Falmouth Marine and Yachting, Falmouth, MA. Area affected is Falmouth Inner Harbor. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Office of Select Board. Per order of Select Board publication dates Friday, May 5, 2023, and Friday, May 12, 2023, Falmouth Enterprise.
Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Falmouth Holdings Corp. received a special permit from the Select Board, which required that construction be completed within one year. The applicant seeks a two-year extension to complete the project in light of regulatory restrictions that limit the seasons during which the work can be performed. Town Council has confirmed this timeframe aligns with applicable zoning statute as revised in 2016. I recommend approval and suggest the board consider amending its practice to allow three years to complete wetland dock special permits going forward.
Thank you. Attorney Amen, you're here for, to represent the applicant?
Yes, I am, Madam Chairman, and let me congratulate you and Mr. Muscali on your recent election, too.
Thank you.
As has been read into the record, a special permit has already been granted for this project at Falmouth Marine on Scranton Avenue. It's a very large project, a $2 million project, and the latest cost estimates are to basically reconstruct the entire waterfront, which, if I recall, is around 900 feet of frontage. The Select Board, in its decision last year, included what has become, has been for many years, standard language. It says that the construction permit, that is, the special permit, shall expire one year from the date that the final approval has been received from government authorities whose approval is required for the project. And the thinking behind that has been that the state's Chapter 91 license cannot be applied for until after the special permit is granted, and then it's applied for, and it can often take a year or longer to get that. So that's where the origin of that condition, one year from the date of final approval. That language is not clear, however, whether it, final approval means the state approval or could mean a building permit, which could actually happen quite a while later. The state zoning statute, and this Select Board's special permit is issued under the State Zoning Act, provides that a town shall specify a time after which a special permit will lapse, up to three years. Now, until 2016, it was two years. After 2016, the town amended its zoning bylaw to provide for three years, but the section that provides that does not apply to special permits issued under the wetland regulations by the Select Board. So the Select Board has been using this old language, which says one year from the date of the final approval, which is a little unclear. In addition, the state statute requires, to avoid lapse of the special permit, that the substantial exercise of rights under the special permit begin within that three-year period. And the language that the Select Board has been using says, basically, it just says will lapse after three years. It isn't clear whether that means the whole project has been completed. So I'm gratified to see that the Town Council, having reviewed what I've sent to the board, agrees that perhaps the language should be reviewed and that the language I've suggested would be an inappropriate change. In this particular case, the Conservation Commission restricted work on the harbor in connection with this reconstruction of Falmouth Marine's waterfront, says that no work can be done in the water from January 15 through May 31 to protect breeding winter flounder. And then, Falmouth Marine's main season, of course, is the summer, and they can't close the boatyard during the summer. So they are left with just a few months in the fall to do a massive project, which really will be three phases. I won't go into what they are, but this project is gonna take two to three years. So the language I've suggested would work under the state statute language, commence construction within three years, even if it isn't completed. The language that I've submitted to you, and it was just read into the record as the proposed emotion, which the Town Council is recommending, that works for us, and I think it might be the basis for more or all of your decisions in the future. If you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Questions from the board?
Attorney Amen, the only work that's been done is engineering, is that it's...
Would you repeat that for me?
I said the only work that's been done on the project so far is engineering.
Oh, yes, there's been no work done on the, in the ground.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
I would just say, I think it's a reasonable request, and I think the Town Council made a suggestion that we do apply this particular three-year timeframe to most projects, so I think that's probably appropriate.
Let me just ask for any comment from the public on this request. Okay, I will, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any conversation among the board?
No, aye.
I agree with Mr. Brown.
Pretty straightforward.
I'd move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Done, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our third hearing, application by Taco Blanco Inc., Doing Business as Taco Blanco for an All Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License and Common Victrol License to be exercised at 870 Main Street.
Notice is hereby given, under Chapter 138 of the general laws as amended, that Taco Blanco Incorporated Doing Business as Taco Blanco has applied for an All Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License to be exercised at 870 Main Street, Unit E, Falmouth, MA. An application for a common victrol license has also been submitted. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, May 22, 2023, at 6:45 PM on the above application. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov. Per order of Select Board, publication date Friday, May 12, 2023, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a new liquor license sought for location that had previously been occupied by an Italian food store and a hair salon in an adjacent storefront. The application has been reviewed by staff. The certification of inspection and food service permit are pending as of this date. We have not received any concerns from butters, but given the change of use for this commercial location, I am not making a recommendation prior to the hearing. If, following the hearing, the board is inclined to approve these licenses, the approval should be conditioned on approval of the certificate of inspection by the Building Department and approval of the food service permit by the Health Department.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself, and you're here to represent the applicant?
I am. Good evening. My name, for the record, is Matt Terry. I'm with the law firm of Amen &amp; Clower here in Falmouth, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, Taco Blanco Inc. Along with me this evening are the two owners of Taco Blanco Inc., James Serprenant and Jesse Kersey, and the manager of record for the liquor license, Paul Crosby. The applicant is applying for a year-round full alcohol liquor license at 870 Main Street, Unit E. The applicant currently owns and operates Anejo in Falmouth, as well as a second Anejo location in Hyannis, Five Bays Bistro, Crisp, and Crisp II, all three of which are located in Osterville. Taco Blanco, this new location is intended to be a fast casual complement to Anejo, offering many of the same menu items in a relaxed atmosphere with available takeout and counter service. The restaurant will operate within 3,600 square feet on the first floor of the building, in eight rooms, three of which will be available to the public. in eight rooms, three of which will be available to the public. The plan is to operate year-round, seven days a week. Hours of operation likely to be from 11:00 to 11:00 each day. The manager of record, Mr. Crosby, has been a manager in the food service industry since 2000 and is currently a manager at Anejo. All alcohol will be stored under lock in areas not accessible by the public. All alcohol servers will be tip certified, and alcohol service areas will have direct line of sight to all seating areas. We're happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
Questions from the board?
I'm sorry, you see the manager is here?
Yes.
And have you managed a liquor license before, sir?
I've managed restaurants before, yes. I haven't had a liquor license in my name before, no.
Okay, so you would be the person that would be responsible for any alcohol concerns? Okay.
I'm just curious, we hear a lot about having problem getting staffing, and you think you're gonna be able to staff this from 11:00 to 11:00, seven days a week? I, I hope you can, I'm just curious to hear what you're doing in order to do that.
Pretty lucky in that department, and, I mean, one of the reasons we've been able to expand is that we kind of always work on a principle of growing people first and then the business after. Paul specifically has worked for our group of restaurants for the last several years, but he's also worked with my family for longer than I care to say in a public arena, not to date him and myself, but he's, he is by far like a, an A-plus operator, and he's definitely one of the reasons why we can even take on this project. But yes, we've, we've been lucky enough to staff up because we're gonna be serving a lot of the same menu items, or at least similar. As we serve at Anejo, we've kind of overstaffed at both of our locations now, and we're training people onsite that are gonna transition to this new location once we open. So yeah, in that regard, yes, we, we're very confident. I mean, it's, staffing is definitely a struggle in today's environment, but we're, we're pretty lucky in that department as we stand right now.
Any other questions, Mr. Muscally, Mr. Brown?
I had, I had a taco at the ball field yesterday from a Taco Blanco truck.
Yeah.
That was pretty tasty.
Awesome.
If you're on the right track.
That was our first onsite, offsite event, I should say, and it was a really well-received.
Yeah.
And the truck is definitely tethered to this concept and will be a great addition to the community.
And that'll be like a catering service that you do?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board, Mr. Zalinski?
The Wing Place next door, do you know what their hours are?
I do not.
Do you guys?
The, the convenience store?
No, the DJ's Wings?
Yeah, DJ's.
Oh, that's, I don't know, down at the end.
Right.
I don't have that either.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't have, I don't have another question, I just have a comment that I hear people talking about, we've got so many restaurants in town, it's sustainable. It's not for us to say, it's a business decision for you to make, but it's just a little feedback that I've been hearing. You know, we've got a new restaurant proposed in the corner here, and it seems like every other week there's another new restaurant, and how many people do we have that are gonna go to restaurants? I mean, I just, not for you to worry, I guess, but...
Well, it's definitely a concern, and it's something that, we're confident, we, you know, one of the things that we do is we do offer takeout at Anejo, and in the summer, you know, it's a good problem to have, but we become really inundated with trying to take care of our lunch and dinner patrons and satisfy takeout, and to be quite honest with you, most nights in the summertime, and even year-round on weekends, we have to turn off takeout because our kitchen space is so small. So this is kind of a win-win for us, where we're able to almost use the space as a commissary kitchen to alleviate some prep and some of the volume that the very small kitchen across the street does, but also allows our customers to enjoy, our food travels really well. So I think it's, I think it's a good fit, and it's also kind of a win-win for both locations.
So...
And oftentimes, there are waiting lines at Anejo, and certainly, two-hour wait, I've...
I've experienced that myself.
So you'll, you'll probably encourage people to take the takeout from there?
It's, it's, again, it's a good problem to have, but it's definitely, the, the new location is a little bit more approachable, it'll be counter service, a little bit maybe more family-friendly, if you will. Our current location is, we like to consider ourselves an elevated dining experience, a little atypical of, of typical Mexican dining experiences. So this is kind of just, yeah, a way to make us more accessible, especially during the summer months, but we do feel like, year-round, it's viable. We definitely have our fingers crossed that it's viable.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Scott, Ms. Scott Price, hang on, Mr. Muscally, I'll call on you in a minute.
This might be a question for Peter, I'm looking at the Butters list, these all look like businesses, are there any apartments near there that we might be concerned about?
Just what's on the list to my lunch.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Muscally?
Yeah, do you participate in DoorDash or Uber Eats or any of those services?
To be honest with you, we, we, we use a third-party online ordering system, and we have, in, in Hyannis and at my other restaurants, we do use DoorDash. We do, I haven't used Uber Eats at any of those locations yet, but we don't use it here just because it's so tight, and to draw more traffic into the downtown area, we have not, we don't do the delivery services, the third-party delivery services at Anejo, but at the new location, we will.
You will be doing it.
Yes.
And that's not, you don't perceive that to be a problem?
It hasn't been a problem at any of my other locations, so I don't perceive it to be, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Comments from the public on this application? Ms. Haynes?
One thing I know about that is this block, the handicap parking signs are in the...
Kathleen, Kathleen, hang on one second, let's get you a microphone and introduce yourself, please, that, that's okay.
One thing I know about that location is the handicap parking signs are not in the parking spaces, they're up in the, where the gardeners should be. And I'd like to see, take the initiative, the handicap parking signs back in the, where the parking spaces are. It's a state law that they have to be on the parking spaces. They will go when the driveway doesn't count, this parking spot, sign has to be there for those to be handicap parking spaces. And that is a problem at that plaza, so I would like to see, taking the initiative to make sure that those signs go on your parking spaces.
Speak to that quickly.
Please. Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
First of all, we don't own the, the plaza, but we are working with the landlord to, to bring that parking lot and the, the building and the facade as well up to, up to code across the board, but also just make it a little bit more visually appealing. I am familiar with how the handicap parking is supposed, just from, from some of my other locations, so we can definitely work with the landlord to make sure that those concerns are addressed.
Thank you. Any, any other comments, Mr. Brown?
I know the, your attorney introduced the group, but could you just identify yourself? Because you've been the primary spokesman.
I'm Paul Crosby.
And sir, you're...
Sir, you, you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jamie Serprenant.
Thank you.
Co-owner of Anejo, and this is my partner, Jesse Kersey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
Seems like a creative venture, there's already alcohol being served in the plaza down, two, two units down. I wouldn't see a problem with it, we don't have any negative comments on our packet.
I, I think the one thing we need to remember is that if we do recommend approval, it would be conditional on approval of the certificate from the building inspector, the Building Department?
Yep.
There, yeah, there are two conditions.
And approval of the food service permit from the Health Department. So if, if anyone wants to make a motion, please include those two pieces.
And the other thing that I would just suggest we consider is that it, being it's a new alcohol license, should we consider a little more time for public comment? Or maybe get that feedback from the Building Department at our next meeting and then approve? Or, I don't wanna put onerous conditions, but I'm just throwing that out there if that's something we should consider.
I mean, it's certainly something, the, the board could certainly do that. I'm not familiar with having done that in the past. That being said, we don't do a lot of new locations for liquor licenses.
But you do have time to do that, because we're waiting on...
Well, that's the only other reason that I suggested it, because we're not really 100% complete anyway.
Because it would be conditional, yeah.
Rather than make it conditional, right?
Would another, when will we meet again?
June 5th.
Would that hurt your schedule if we...
I guess my only question would be, would that interrupt the process of the application going up to the state for approval?
I guess it would.
Because I think that that would definitely cut into our summer...
Yeah, I guess that is kind of tough timing for a little, I'm gonna waive that.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I'd move approval contingent upon the issuance of the certificate of inspection and the food service establishment permit.
I'll second that.
You said inspection by the Building Department and approval of food service permit by the Health Department, is that correct?
I was, I was just reading what was her, contingent upon the issuance of the certificate of inspection, I guess, from the Building Department, yeah.
Thank you. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm gonna refuse myself for the next hearing for the senior center naming.
Scott, you're up real quick.
Oh, you, you good?
If you wanna read it, I'm good.
Okay, okay. So I didn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot today.
Thank you.
The Select Board of the town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing as required by the Select Board naming policy for public facilities and places to solicit comments from the public on the quest, request to name the new senior center the, quote, John V. Mignani Senior Center, end quote, and that the old senior center building named after John DeMello retain its name. Comments may be sent via email to selectboard@falmouthma.gov. The public hearing will be held on Monday, May 22nd, 2023, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, Falmouth MA, 02540. Publication date, Friday, May 5th, 2023, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. For the, is there an applicant on?
I noticed Representative Vera is in the background, did you maybe wanna say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, I wanna start off, before we talk about the proposal, about the process, right? So the town has a process for looking at naming buildings that the Select Board has approved a number of years ago, and that initiates with a citizen proposing a name change or a name creation for a building. And then there's a one-year period before the Select Board appoints a committee to review the proposal and then come back with a recommendation. Friday afternoon email that I received from the Select Board office was the first time I had heard about where we were in this process since I pinged you after the first year of putting the proposal in and not hearing anything. So there obviously was a subcommittee, I don't know who was on it. It obviously met, I don't know when it met, and I was notified that the Select Board meeting was tonight to look at the naming. So we're here tonight, and I'm here tonight after missing my other meeting, but I think we need to look at this process, because if there is a process where someone puts an application in and a committee is supposed to meet to discuss it, you should let the person who put the application in know that you're having that meeting so that they can participate and, and be part of that process. But I wasn't, because I didn't know about it, but I know about tonight and I'm here. We're here tonight on the proposal to talk about the senior center, right? We have the John DeMello Senior Center, which we vacated, and we're working now with our veterans organizations and the Joe Q Veterans Coffee Incorporated to bring a veteran center to that building, and we constructed a new senior center. And so looking at the history of the senior center and looking at the development of a new senior center, going back to the time in the late 90s when John Mignani had a vision of putting together a group and creating a 501(c)(3), Friends of the New Falmouth Senior Center. And that organization began the process of looking and trying to get community support to develop a new senior center. We purchased some property in East Falmouth, we looked at a zoning change, but we never quite got there. Over the course of that time, Mr. Mignani served 18 years as our senior center director, as a town meeting member, he served as a charter member of the Lions Club, he served as a key link in our community to move the proposal to develop a new senior center forward. I had the opportunity, just before becoming state rep, to serve as the president of the new senior center, Friends Group, which is now just the Friends of the Falmouth Council on Aging, because we saw a vision change before going forward with the new project, and now the new project is completed. And so looking at the senior center, the question that folks asked me is, what are they gonna call the new senior center? I said, well, I didn't see anybody talk about moving over the name, the John DeMello Senior Center, to the new building. I said, but the first person that comes to my mind that served so many years in this community in various capacities and helped create that initial vision was John Mignani. And so why don't we put a proposal in to name the new senior center, the John Mignani Senior Center, and see where it goes and be part of the discussion and part of the process? So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, this subcommittee that met recommended no, no name for the new building, is that correct?
Mr. Vera, Mr. Johnson Staub can speak to the process or the timing of that process?
Sure. First of all, I apologize for not notifying you sooner of this hearing. There was a change that the board voted to its policy, so this is the hearing, right? So the, the sub, and the other change that the board voted was to replace the quote-unquote "subcommittee" with an individual Select Board member. So the policy...
So there was no subcommittee that met?
That's correct. So it was, so the board designated an individual Select Board member, which happened to be Mr. Zalinski, and under the policy, he met with the existing director of the senior ser, of the, of senior services, excuse me, and the members of the Council on Aging, some of whom are here today. And then, instead of a separate hearing convened by the subcommittee, the change to the process was that the entire board would hold the hearing. So this is the opportunity for public...
Okay, 'cause some folks had called me about the meeting you held with the others and said, why weren't you there? And I said, I didn't know about it, so that, that was not a subcommittee because the policy changed. So there was a meeting.
That's correct.
But it wasn't considered the subcommittee, and that group, my understanding, their recommendation back was to do no name change, is that correct?
So it was, it was the liaison doing the outreach envisioned under the policy to these stakeholders, and I'll let Mr. Zalinski report on what, what happened there, I wasn't there, but, so that's a, you know, that's a stakeholder group, the Council on Aging, and...
Yeah, I just have a simple question, did they recommend, as I was told after that meeting, no name change?
There was a recommendation that it would be called the Senior Center.
Okay, so that, no name change, because it is called the Senior Center, okay. So, so I think we have, I think we have a couple of things to look at. One is whether or not we believe that, that this is an opportunity to name the new senior center after someone who was pivotal in starting the movement 30 years ago to create this new senior center, someone who gave a lot to this community, both in the civic side and the nonprofit side. Or if not, really to look at the opportunity to say, why is the John DeMello Senior Center, which was legally named by the Board of Selectmen, still the name of a building that's no longer the senior center? I think that's another discussion, not for today, but I think it's one for us to think about, because the Select Board has named that, the senior center, the John DeMello Senior Center, but there was no move that name to the new location. So the proposal that I had put before the board a little, over a year ago now, was to keep that structure named after Mr. DeMello on, on Dillingham, and to name the new senior center after John Mignani, so, so that's...
Any questions for Mr. Vera?
Well, I would say that I'm surprised that they didn't accept the suggestion for the name of the building for Mr. Mignani, because I thought it was a good suggestion personally. I also agree that the John DeMello building...
We're not, we're not doing, we're not doing interaction here, we're just questions, because the, the other side's probably gonna wanna speak to this as well.
Okay.
Before we have discussion, I was just asking if you had any questions.
It's not a question, it's just a comment, so... I don't have any question, I understand the proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the matter?
Can I just ask one question? What, what was the date changed of the new policy, so that I can go back and just brush up on it for future?
It was shortly after we had another open meeting training, where it was reminded that even a meeting of two Select Board members should be a posted public open meeting, because subcommittees informally are really not by the book.
If you could just email me a copy. Sure, it's February 13, 2023, I'll email to you. February 2023, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vera.
2023, this year.
Ma'am?
Good evening, I, I never like going after David, because he's so eloquent, so I, I have my notes, I hope you'll bear with me, thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak about John Mignani and why I believe our beautiful new senior center should be named in his honor. My name is Deborah Rogers, and I live in Precinct 5. I met John 27 years ago. There's a reason John was named Citizen of the Year in 2000 by the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. John exemplified service to others and did so with a huge heart, a giving soul, and the biggest smile I've ever seen. He took that small building on Dillingham Ave, intended to serve all the seniors in our community, and transformed every inch of it into a warm and... He took that small building on Dillingham Ave, intended to serve all the seniors in our community, and transformed every inch of it into a warm and welcoming hub, earning him the adoration and admiration of everyone who met him. To be in John's presence was to see the best in our humanity. John dreamed of, and as David said, spoke often of building a facility our seniors needed and deserved, and that became a reality in part because of his perseverance and vision. John's service to our community extends far beyond his 18 years as Director of the Senior Center, and as David mentioned, and his service touched numerous aspects of our community and many, many lives, including my own. I think that we could all use a little John Mignani right now in our lives. And naming our new senior center in his honor does more than place a name on a building. It reminds us of the feeling we had any time that we were in his presence. To be kind, to build community, to smile at each other, and have a sense of belonging. Our community has named other buildings and spaces after notable citizens. Most recently, I was thrilled when part of our bike path was named for my dear friend Kevin Lynch. I urge our Select Board to once again honor someone who deserves to be remembered and to do so by naming our senior center in John's name. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Rogers?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I congratulate Nancy, but she's not in the room. Congratulations, Bob. Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Swain. I'm a Precinct 6 town meeting member, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Council on Aging. So I am here with several other Council on Aging representatives to share with you a letter that we submitted to Scott and Peter after our meeting on March 6th of the Council on Aging Board. So Scott came to that meeting as a representative of the Selectmen to gain information from us as to what had been done and what our thoughts were. So I'm just gonna quickly read that. History of discussion regarding the naming of the new senior center building. In anticipation of our new building in 2018, the COA Board began actively researching, discussing, and gathering feedback from many diverse individuals and organizations on trends and sentiments regarding the naming of senior seniors nationwide. Dates of Council on Aging Board discussions ranged from early 2018 through November 2019. On July 31st, 2019, COA meeting included a consultant facilitating branding and naming discussion with participants from many sectors of the community. Minutes reflected detailed highlights. The COA Board members reflected on all the data, focus group input, and prior discussions, keeping a strong focus on who we serve while also maintaining, maintaining the connection as a town department. The COA Board decided to recommend the name Falmouth Senior Center to Board of Selectmen in early fall 2019. On March 3rd, 2023, Select Board Member Scott Zalinski attended our COA Board meeting. We reviewed the history and held a vote to reiterate our recommendation to the Select Board. Our unanimous vote on March 3rd was to retain the current name Falmouth Senior Center as it was well-vetted and had been well-received by the entire community. Further, it is the collective feeling of the COA Board that individuals have made, who have made significant contributions to the senior population of Falmouth should be highlighted on a recognition wall prominently cited in the Falmouth Senior Center. The COA Board will develop a protocol for the determination of placement of names on the wall, and this was submitted by me on behalf of our Board. So, I loved John Mignani as well, but there are so many other people who also have contributed to the senior community and population in this town, including to just name a few, Eileen Finell, Earl Flag, Jim Vera, and John Mignani. There are countless others, many of whom have made a lot of contributions, and this building is here now because of all of their efforts. So, the Board talked with so many people throughout all these meetings, and that was our conclusion. But we also love John Mignani. Thank you for listening.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Clancy?
Good evening. Joseph Clancy, Vice Chair of the Council on Aging. Thanks for hearing us. Back in 19, as Brenda Swain said, we had a rebranding session. We had 22 volunteers from various members of the community and the Council on Aging. And we hashed it out pretty good. We knew that there were a lot of longstanding people like John Mignani, like Earl Flag, like Ms. Finell, that had really developed the senior center to be what it is today. And so without all of that tradition, we wouldn't be where we're at today with over 6,000 members. So as we discussed, we thought it would be very appropriate to have a, a wall distinguishing all of these people so that as people come in and view our beautiful building, they will be able to see and acknowledge the people that came before us and helped to establish this fine building and this organization. So we gave it a lot of thought. We had a lot of people, and we think the senior center is an appropriate name with recognition for all the people that have helped make it what it is today. Thank you.
Mr. Clancy. Anyone else? How would the Board like to proceed?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Are we voting on a name tonight or are we voting on next steps? Or what, what exactly are we supposed to do?
This is the last step in the process, so you can make a decision tonight. But if you're not comfortable, you wanna continue the hearing, you can do that as well.
Certainly take it under advisement. So you get some more feedback.
I, I certainly would, would look towards a, you know, an adjournment.
Continuation?
Continuation. I'm still learning some of the terms here, so thank you.
Oh, trust me, I understand.
I guess I would say that I think that's a good backup plan to have the wall and the memorance of John Mignani and perhaps others that should be remembered. And I guess rather than that just be something that's kinda done ad hoc, I would say that if that's gonna be the substitution for the naming of the building, then maybe the Select Board should vote that that thing be, that whatever it is be put in place. So I guess I would also agree with, let's give it a little more thought and come to a more definitive conclusion of what that wall would contain and how it would be done. And then we could vote that as a permanent fixture to the building rather than just something that may only be there for a temporary time.
Mr. Zalinski, do you have anything to share with, with the Board as far as your involvement with naming?
I was, I was engaged with, with the conversation, and, and everyone had legitimate points, and everybody was passionate about it. And Father Mignani was my, you know, he, he was a priest at the church I went to. So I, I feel, I feel it. In fact, part of my recommendation was this wall of recognition to be able to get the other participants included in this, in this recognition. So I would agree with you. If we were to continue this, they could come back with a, a little more of a definitive proposal of how it would be displayed, who would be on it, you know, what the requirements for being on it would be, and give us a little more context and the rest of the public's more context. And quite frankly, Mr. Vera and, and Father Mignani, I, it just, I agree wholeheartedly with an extension to this and get a little more information so everybody's satisfied with how we revere these people.
Or at least everyone's at least halfway satisfied.
Well, at least it, it's all out there.
Right.
It gives David a little more time to, to talk to people, kinda cleans up the scheduling conflict or the misunderstanding with scheduling and time. And it would also give my colleagues time to speak to their constituency, to see how they feel about it before making a vote. It's kinda sprung on you because I was the only one there. So I would wholeheartedly urge, urge you to vote that way so you could get out there and speak to your people.
Right. Okay.
Question? Anymore?
Just sitting back, ah, Mark Fineran, Grand Ave. Just sitting, yeah, watching this. I thought that it leaves an opening for a perfect compromise. You might call it the John Mignani Wall and dedicated to all the people who gave as much as he did, or more if the case may be.
That may be an argument you wanna take up with the Council. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanna mention that at that meeting, we did talk about putting into place a policy related to that wall at the council level in the building as a policy. So if there's a directive to change that process, just let us know so that, I mean, we're happy to, to do that, and that sounds like a really good idea, Mark. So I think that we had thought that we needed a lot more meat to the bones of that wall, but wanted to go through this process first. And definitely, we thought we, as the Council, would do that, but if this group is the group that wants to figure that policy out, I don't know how that works.
No, I don't, I don't think that's what we're saying.
All right.
We just wanna know, we just wanna know what yours is.
Yeah, so we, we haven't done that because this was the first step to that.
Yeah, I think we want you to do that work and.
Okay.
To the Chair.
Yeah. Mr. Mcquette, Miss Scali.
Yeah, you, you mentioned before, I think that you did some research into other namings of other senior centers. Could you share some of that?
Yes, and in 2018, when we started the process with architects and all of that, we visited several other locations, and many of them talked about the procedures they went through in determining whether to name the building the senior center or active living, or people have sometimes issues with the word senior, with a senior center. So there's a lot of different ways that people look at naming, not just in, in regards to for a person, but the concept of a active-living senior center. So we talked to lots of people and heard lots of different reasons for naming after people, not doing that, calling it something other than a senior center. There was a lot of discussion.
And I believe those minutes are, those minutes are available.
Correct.
So you can, you can read the entirety of the meeting and how it was described and how it was weighed out as well. And that, you know, this continuance, it'll give you that time to do that as well. Anyone else?
I think we have one more comment.
Sir?
That was the exact comment that I was gonna have. I'm, I'm.
Could you come up and identify yourself?
I usually speak loud anyways. My name is Steve Borkland, and I'm actually off Cape, off Cape resident up in Situate. But that was a comment I was gonna make, 'cause there's a lot of towns over the last five to 10 years that are getting rid of older senior centers and creating larger facilities. And I was just gonna recommend to the people that are proposing the name and the ones that are in opposition to that to look at all the other towns and find out what they've done over the last five or 10 years. Pretty easy thing to do.
Thank you.
It is, it seems to be the trend of going with a more generic town name like the Sandwich, I think they call it the Center for Active Living or something like that.
I, I just wanna again reiterate, that research was all done. It wasn't done this year, but it was done, what, going back to 2018. But I recall there was a, there was a branding much more recently, just a year before the senior center opened. So there's no one right answer, but in terms of, you know, should we go out and find out what the other towns are doing? The Council already did that.
And that's in the minutes as well.
This is the result that they came to.
Sir?
Hi, Jamie McDonald. I'm on the Board. I guess this would be a point of order. So you have a Board who comes up with a decision that we've, we've all been approved by the Selectmen, and it's a great opportunity for other people to comment. So what is the weight of the Board versus individual comments? Is there a weighted average here? Or why does a Board come up with a decision? I'm just trying to, it's a point of order, that's all.
Well, we, could I speak, we haven't overruled their decision.
No, I, no, I know, but we made a decision, so it's just advisory.
And it still stands so far. We're just wondering what that wall would be, and we wanted to know clearly what it's gonna be, how it's gonna be done, where it's gonna be. And then we will likely vote that that will be there in perpetuity or however long the building is there.
Okay.
We just wanna know what you're gonna do clearly.
One often likes to know what they're voting for.
Okay, but, but you, so you are just, so it's not the Falmouth Senior Center yet? We have to go through this process?
No, that's not the case. It's still, we, we haven't overruled or made any changes to what you've decided.
Okay, that's what I'm just trying to figure out.
We're just asking clarification on the suggestion on the wall so that we can then say, yes, we sanction that or we don't, and then we're gonna maybe vote to accept and approve it, and then we're gonna put our stamp on it to say that it can't just be something that comes and goes. If you have a different Board in a few years.
I understand that, Doug. Thanks.
Okay.
It's the responsibility. It's the responsibility.
Make a clarifying point that this is a public hearing, so we have to open it up for the public to make comments.
Sure, I, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the weight was, that's all.
Okay.
Thanks, Miss Scali.
But at the end of the day, it's the Board's responsibility to either name a building or, or not. Is that correct?
It's to go with the recommendation of the Advisory Committee.
Right. There's a recommendation, but the ultimate decision is, is on the Select Board whether to name the building under its policy that, that has been in place. Thank you.
And in rare cases, I mean, it hardly ever happens, but there are cases where the Select Board doesn't agree with the decision that's been made. I don't think that's the case here, but I'll give you an example. The Coastal Resiliency Committee recommended that we not put groynes at Manon. And we had to have a discussion on town meeting floor, and, you know, it's a rare and unfortunate situation, but it doesn't really happen much.
Mr. Clancy.
Joseph Clancy again. I might just state an excerpt that I had in my notes about the naming process. And basically, in quote, it says, "To seek the input and the advice of whichever department, board, committee, or commission oversees the public facility or place to be named or renamed and hold a public hearing to seek the input from the community." I think that's what Jamie was alluding to, that we are your Council on Aging, that the Selectmen has appointed us to help establish policy for this particular building.
Right.
And that's what we've done.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
So my encouragement to you is to read the minutes, come up with the most factual information you can to make your vote, and I'd entertain a motion to continue if that's the Board's pleasure.
I would so move that we take this up at a future meeting to be determined because I think we'll give the Council on Aging time to discuss and come back to us with what their plan is for that.
Swain, you good with that? Thank you.
So we'll wait to hear back from them, right?
So that's a motion?
Second.
Yep. We have a motion and a second. All of it.
Sorry, just close the hearing first.
No.
Continuing.
Oh, continuing. Okay, sorry. Sorry.
So we have a motion and a second to continue to a future date. You're gonna stay in touch with Mrs. Swain to get us a, a date that's convenient for everybody?
Yes. In this case, if this were a liquor hearing or something that was guided by statute, we would really need a date certain. But because this is really just a Select Board policy, we do have a little bit more flexibility so we can continue to a date to be determined.
Thank you. So we have a, a motion and a second. All of us in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Thank you. Somebody wanna get Nancy back in here quick?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
You did great.
Yeah, thanks.
Dave will be working him in the parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
Dave will be working him in the parking lot.
Can you tell me one of those kids?
See what happens when you leave?
Hurry up.
You shouldn't have left your candy supplies dwindling.
Thank you. Take this. Give me a week.
You are welcome. Okay, we will move on to business, and we have an update from the Cape and Islands District Attorney, Attorney Robert Gallaboy.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Rob Gallaboy is Cape and Islands District Attorney. Thank you for allowing me to come in this evening just to give you a little bit of an update on the status of our office. As I think all of you know, I took office back in January, on January 4th, and I just wanted to take a moment to let you know what we're doing in the office and what our plans are in the next several months. So I was sworn in on January 4th, and my first order of business is I sworn in Jessica Alumba to be my first Assistant District Attorney. For those of you, that may be a little un. For those of you that may be a little unfamiliar in how a DA's office operates, the first assistant is basically the attorney that's in charge of the office. In terms of the caseload that we handle, we handle approximately 12,000 cases on an annual basis, as well as running the administrative, or being in charge of the administrative staff inside the office. Jessica Alumba is the first woman to ever hold this top position in the Cape and Islands DA's office, and we have about a 50-year history. So it's a very exciting time, as you might imagine. Under Jess's leadership, she formed what we call vertical prosecution. What that is, is when a case comes into court, when a person's arraigned, that's the initial appearance on a case. The prosecutor that is assigned at that arraignment carries that case all the way through the pendency of the case, through the pre-trial stage, motions, disposition, or trial. And as you might imagine, for those cases where we have victims, it makes it very easy for them now. They know who they're going to be working with as a prosecutor throughout the outset of the case, through the entire case. And it also is beneficial for our law enforcement partners, because they're also aware who's going to be assigned the case from the very beginning. Also, under Jess's leadership, we formed an unsolved homicide unit for the Cape and Islands DA's office. When I took office, we had nine unsolved homicides across the Cape and the Islands. Within the first week, we had our first meeting, we assembled two different teams. And within the first two months, before the end of March, we charged two individuals with first-degree murder for a homicide dated back to 2011, and we continue to work on two other cases, as I'm standing here right now. When I also took office, leading up to the swearing-in and shortly thereafter, I kept a promise to meet with each of the 22 police chiefs that my office works with, including Ed Dunn, who recently left, but I met with him. And the questions that I put to all of them was, what would you like our administration to continue doing from the previous administration, and what would you like to see a little bit different in the new administration? And each conversation lasted at least an hour in the office of the chief, and we are taking all that information and putting it to work. We also formed a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. We have a chair. Your vice chair, Angelé Scott Price, has agreed to be the chair of the Cape and Islands Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. We have also been joined by Tara Vargas Wallace, who is the president and founder of Amplify POC. And what I've been doing, as I've been going around to each of the towns with these updates, I've been putting out there, if anyone is interested in joining our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, please contact our office. We are meeting with a lot of different individuals. We plan on having an organizational meeting next June. So if you want to be a part of this particular committee, I invite you to contact our office. Two more points, and I realize you have a very busy agenda tonight. Our office is now taking and maintaining data. This is new for the Cape and Islands District Attorney's Office. The past couple months, we've put our administrative assistants through some training. And on May 1st, we launched a data collection effort. The data collection effort will continue, of course, through the end of the year. We are noting such things on every single case as gender, race, ethnicity, the charges, whether or not a bail has been set, and if you've made that bail. And at the end of the year, our intention is to comprise an annual report, which will also be the first for the Cape and Islands DA's office, and not just scrutinize the annual report internally, but we're going to release it to the public, so we can accept your criticisms and feedback, and try to figure out how we can do things better. And I'm going to leave you with this. A year leading up to my election, I will say without a doubt, the single biggest platform issue was whether or not we could get a mental health court in our district courts. And a mental health court, professionals in the field come right into the courtroom and work with that struggling defendant to try to identify the core issue. And as we all know, if you can identify the core issue, then you have a chance to treat that core issue. And by doing so, you can reduce recidivism, making us all safer. These mental health court sessions existed across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, except the Cape and the Islands. A week ago, municipal district court First Justice Judge Julian acknowledged, we're getting one, and we're getting one in short order. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, too. I really do appreciate your time. I recognize you have a really full agenda tonight. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to come back in about six months with another update, if that'd be allowed.
That would be great. Any questions or comments from the board? This is very, very exciting. I'm so glad you decided to come in tonight. Mr. Brown?
I just thank you also for apparently looking at your budget and figuring out where you stand, so.
Yeah, that's been an effort, too. You read the papers today?
Yeah.
Yeah, timing's everything.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm really interested in the statistics that you gather in terms of the arrests, and looking at gender, looking at race, looking at bail set.
As am I.
I think that's going to be very, very important data for us.
I fully agree.
Mr. Ms. Scally?
My point was Doug's on the budget and the article in the paper.
Thank you. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Looking forward to working with you some more.
Me, too.
Appreciate the report. Thanks for coming in.
And thank you so much for your work.
Thank you so much.
And absolutely, we'd love you to come back in six months.
Will do. Have a good evening, okay?
And I look forward to the data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, water rate presentation.
Madam Chair, while our team is assembling, I could make a few introductory remarks. So this is a follow-up to the presentation at your last meeting. And Finance Director Ed Santeo has been working with Public Works staff to prepare a pragmatic water rate approach that addresses critical infrastructure needs. The recommendation that they will outline today includes a series of increases over three years that will enable us to pay for the $3 million annual investment in replacing water mains that has been clearly illustrated in the prior presentation. And, you know, there are a couple of different ways that the board could choose to proceed with funding the Water Department generally, and the water main replacement specifically. Again, what's going to be outlined is viewed as a compromise, pragmatic approach that does not fund all Water Department operating capital costs, which the town has historically not done. The town has historically paid for Water Department costs through a combination of water fees and general fund revenues. So with that, I will hand it off to Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Santeo, Finance Director, thank you for your time today. We're going to do a start off with a recap from our Department of Public Works individuals. And we have several people here, this is near and dear to their heart. They've wanted to improve the water distribution system for a number of years. So this is Peter McConity.
Good evening, Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. We're here tonight, this is a, this has been a sizable project that we're working on about a month ago. We came forward with you, our interim water superintendent and our consultant, our water consultant, came forward and did a presentation on the capital efficiency plan. It was a very detailed plan outlining what needed to be done to our water main system with timelines and different phases. The last meeting, we had a water rate presentation through our consultant, Ty and Bond, and there was additional information that was requested from the select board from that meeting, so we're going further tonight. I would like to say thank you very much to Ed for putting this presentation together. He put a lot of room, a lot of time into this. Most of this presentation is all on the options and the financial data. I'm just going to go through a few slides that we have been throwing in the past. So obviously, when you have emergency unplanned water main breaks, it's an inconvenience for everyone. It usually happens at nighttime, it happens on weekends, it's happening on holidays. The photos that you're looking at here is actually on Main Street on New Year's Eve, down towards the police station several years ago. And it creates chaos, it shuts down business, it shuts down the roadways, and it doesn't make too good for a New Year's Eve. We've also been having several of them this past year out on Route 28A, some of the ancient water main pipes that are over there that are starting to cause us problems. So we've seen this photo, the photo on the left is a tuberculated pipe. Photo on the right is a pipe that's been lined, or it's a new installation of a pipe. The photo on the left, the left pipe, obviously, you can tell that when water runs through that pipe, you get reduced flow, you get reduced pressure, and it also can cause water problems, water complaints through our office. Unfortunately, many miles of piping underneath our roadway is the pipe on the left. So what is the Falmouth water system? We have approximately 384, 385 miles of water main. About 80 miles of the water main is pre-1950. 239 miles are not made of the preferred material. We've been, our standard is putting in ductile iron, cement ductile iron. It's a line pipe, it's rigid, you can hit it, actually, if you're digging, you can hit it. The older pipes, you hit it, burst, the older asbestos pipes, it bursts, and you have problems. And you're rupturing it, and you're chasing it down the street. 29% or 112 miles is less than the preferred eight-inch pipe or greater. The Mass DEP requests, considers a standard minimum-sized pipe is eight-inch for fire flow and for water volume. And our system also has mains that have, and I just found out tonight through our interim water superintendent, has mains less than two inches, and some of the, some of them up to 50 connections on one two-inch pipe. You can just imagine a two-inch line with 50 connections on a hose, and in the past, that's what's happened. We're averaging about nine breaks a year. I think it's a little bit more than that. And like I say, they happen at the most unopportune time. So what we're looking to do, and what was presented a month ago, we're looking to consistently spend $3 million a year, and that's for the foreseeable future, and that's for 2023 costs of $3 million a year. We already have water main projects in the pipeline, forget the pun, and the line for us to be able to design, we're looking to go preferably to town meeting in the fall to have these appropriation for the funds, to be able to start this, and then be looking at doing construction in late winter or early spring. The capital efficiency plan had three phases. Phase one and phase two was the highest priority for us, and it consists of $49 million. And that's once again in 2023 dollars, and it's looking to address 9.1 miles of mains. And as I said, many of those projects are already under design through with our consultant. The projects cannot be done all at once, there's only so many large utility contractors on Cape, and when you're starting to put projects together, you don't want too many projects throughout town. You just, you don't want too many detours throughout town. One good-sized project to get us through would be sizable for us. The water revenues, has this, is this new information? It's not new information. This is more through Ed, but I did say that I would go through these couple of slides. And 2020, in 2010, the auditor's management letter did state that the Water Department was not covering the use of the water, and it needed subsidy from the general fund. And in 2016 and in 2023, we did a water rate study presentation, and again, the water was not covering the costs, and we have no excess water revenues for the water main replacement program. So that's why we're looking to put into effect this efficiency plan. So in addition, this slide right here is other projects that are going on through town. There are projects that have been already been approved, or they're in the process of being approved. And you can see the dollar figures on the right-hand side, that we have some, the fire station, we have bridges, we have schools, a lot of them through the wastewater. But as you can see, these are projects that are going to be coming up in the next couple of years. So with that, as a refresher, and I'd just like to bring back Ed, and once again, say thank you to Ed for putting this presentation together. Tonight, we do have Deputy Director of Public Works, Stephen Catterett, our interim water superintendent, Mike Rigetto, and our consultant, Steve Rafferty, if there's any questions on the water mains.
I want to also say that DPW put a tremendous amount of work into this, and they're very passionate about taking care of this problem that's been a longstanding problem and hasn't been addressed for a number of years. Again, this is a culmination of several presentations, and this is a presentation where we showed that we're trying to manage the debt drop-off for the projects that Peter discussed. So we don't have room currently unless we reprioritize within the debt drop-off. So again, we're looking at potentially raising new money. Look at a few different ways of potentially funding this particular project. We typically use free cash for projects of $2 million or less, rather than these types of large and ongoing types of projects, projects that will be happening throughout the years. This is a reoccurring expense, obviously, having to address pipes that are back to the 1890s as opposed to, you know, a one-year situation. If we use free cash every year to manage this particular project, then projected eight to nine million dollars that are spent every year on the entire town's capital would have to be taken down to about five or six million dollars for everybody other than those that we're looking to put in place water mains. And also, although it's a big number that Falmouth generates in free cash, it's a low percentage in terms of operating expenses for the town versus its peer communities on the Cape. And you'll see that in the slide up ahead. And we're also trying to preserve the AAA bond rating that the Finance Department, prior to me, has worked so hard to achieve and maintain. So this is where Falmouth lies in terms of free cash percentage as a percentage of operations. Again, it's a big number, but it's the third lowest on the Cape in terms of the reserves that the town has as it goes forward. There are only 14 communities on this slide. Wealth Fleet has had a problem balancing its books and certifying free cash for the last couple of years. They're working through some major issues. Again, not an issue that the Town of Falmouth has because of the great people that you have in your Finance Department. And when you look at Falmouth, its percentage of reserves versus its operating budget, again, it's in the lower half of the peer communities. And one of the reasons is, you know, you don't have enterprise funds that would have their own retained earnings. You're relying on free cash and stabilization. And Falmouth is in great shape financially, and the people have done a great job. But I just point these things out to say that, you know, utilizing your reserves to do this type of thing, utilizing one-time dollars may not be the way to go.
Could I just ask a quick question before we, Ed, if you don't mind me interrupting? Could you just back up one second?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Oops. Yes.
Just tell me what that stabilization, I know what stabilization is, but retained earnings, could you just tell me briefly what that is?
When you have an enterprise fund, which is a business-like entity, which is separate from the general fund, called an enterprise, an enterprise fund, and it has its own reserves, it has its own retained earnings, so it doesn't jeopardize the general fund.
I see.
Now, Falmouth doesn't have any enterprise funds. So when I add up the enterprise funds that most of the other towns have with their retained earnings, plus free cash, plus stabilization, this is where Falmouth resides.
I see.
As it relates to its reserve levels.
So to the untrained eye, their books might look better, but actually, we're not bad.
Not bad, but not, you know, at the top level of the peer groups. And again, we're trying to protect that AAA rating.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. I keep hearing that in this presentation and in the previous presentation, that we haven't done much. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Oh, done much in terms of water main replacement?
Yes. And in terms, and I would like to know what we have done in terms of water main replacement, and what money has gone towards water and the treatment centers since 2010.
Sure, we can get you that information. There has been some water work done, but...
Yes. I just keep hearing that we haven't done it, and I'm thinking, okay, but we have done some.
I'm sorry, that's a misconception.
I'd like to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The water plant at Long Pond is a tremendous facility that was put in place. So that's the water production, it's the water distribution that has not necessarily been maintained as well as your water production capabilities. But you've done a great job in terms of the water production.
So in terms of distribution, I would also like to know about that, what we've done since 2010.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
And that was in the prior presentation, but we can bring that back.
I'd like to see that.
When the DPW did the capital, the last time, they did list the different main replacements that they've done, either by the contractors or by the staff themselves. So, yes.
If I could have that again, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, you know, we've talked about this in the past, COVID, the Town of Falmouth did a... Covid, the town of Falmouth did a great job going through Covid in terms of its maintaining its revenues. It's the recessions that are normally a, a problem. So the pandemic didn't do as much as people might have feared, but the recessions have caused issues. And during the last recession, Falmouth's free cash went down to seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So when we look at different ways to fund this particular project, again, we could use free cash. We could continue the subsidy of the water department by using free cash. We could use, we could do tax increases. We could reprioritize other debt funds that haven't already been committed. We could lower or drain reserves. Or we could do water rates. We could do water rates to try to cover the entire operation, have it be like an enterprise fund where it's covering all its costs. Or we could, as Peter indicated, we could do something that's potential compromise, which is to try to raise water rates enough to deal with the water mains issue. Or we can continue, as you saw in the initial slides, kind of doing it on an emergency basis. Don't, don't have a, a water main replacement program. When we looked at the water department funding all of its operations, we looked at a pretty steep increase in rates and we thought that might be a little problematic to impose on people all at once. And if we wanted to move towards what an enterprise fund does so they could have its own retained earnings and it doesn't put pressure on the general fund, you may take a three-to-ten-year approach. You may take, you know, go longer with an approach. Or you may, you may choose never to do that. You may choose always to have the general fund subsidize the water department. What we're proposing is that we actually increase revenues only enough to fund the water main replacement program, the three million dollars at two hundred and twenty-three levels of expenditure. And what we want to do is, as we indicated in the last time, hear from the board of selectmen about, you know, how many years do we do that? We're proposing a three-year ramp-up to actually get to the point where a hundred percent of the water mains could be funded out of water rates. And again, we talked about this is not a new issue. This was brought up in two thousand and sixteen. And this was, these were some of the percentages that many years ago and a lot less inflation ago to try to get to a more sustainable footing for the water mains, either an eighteen, twelve, and eight percent option, and then a twenty, ten, and five percent water rate increase option. And that wasn't taken care of back then. Obviously, that put us, you know, significantly behind where we need to be in today's dollars. And this was just a summary of, of that option one and option two and what the effective increase would have been. So again, one of the options for you to consider then is to do enough over the next three or more years to try to get to a level of fully of funding the new water main replacement program, if that's what you choose to do. We're going to give you an example of increasing revenues over three years. For the initial year, obvious, initial two years, we're going to have a gap in what we need for the water main replacements at three million dollars and what the increase in water rates will provide. So we can look to the water stabilization fund. That's been drained from four million dollars down to about six hundred thousand dollars over the last several years. We can do the.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
That's repairs mostly?
For the.
The decrease in that stabilization fund, that's due to increased, increased stock and, and unforeseen?
Yes. That was, you know, mainly for repairs or other operational components, most, you know, primarily capital as it relates to the water operation.
Thank you, madam.
We could use the remaining amount of ARPA funds that are there, that are available, some amount of free cash and, and/or any combination of that money to try to bridge the gap. The change in rates that's being suggested to try to get it to a more normal rate structure format, which most communities have, would be a flat fee based on a meter size. All the water usage would be charged for as opposed to having a prepayment. And some of the people that do a prepayment for the water don't actually use all the water, have potentially a three-tiered rate structure. The more water you use, the more you would pay for that water. And then we can look at some low-income elderly type of relief packages as we go through this process. So we're looking at, as an example, increasing fourteen percent, fifteen percent, and then sixteen percent over a three-year period. Increasing the revenues to the level that would fully sustain in two thousand and twenty-three dollars by two thousand and twenty-six. And then we'd look at two point five million approximately in two thousand and twenty-four that would have to come from other revenues. And then bring that down to one point four. That needs to come from other revenues, again, free cash, ARPA, hopefully, well, ARPA needs to be spent by then, but, you know, stabilization, capital stabilization, those types of things. And then down to zero where there wouldn't be a subsidy for the water mains. There would still be a subsidy for the water department, but not for the water mains program. Some of the things that may help seniors, for example, would be the senior circuit breaker situation where you take your taxes that you're paying, plus your water and sewer rates, and you would file a tax form with the state and you would potentially get a reduction in your taxes. And then if a senior didn't pay any state taxes at all, they would get a check if they qualify for the senior circuit breaker. Again, one of the points is do it now. You don't need to pay taxes to the state, file the forms, and you may get a rebate if you qualify. And then just looking at some, what some other communities do, Province Town has elderly, low-income water and sewer exemption, where half of the water usage rates for elderly are reduced. And that's based on an income level, which is the same as the elderly tax exemption. So the same paperwork would be used to judge whether those folks that are low-income could get a break on their water. I think the upcoming steps, if you, you believe that it's worth pursuing the next set of steps, would be to have, you know, you know, one or more rate hearings, possibly two rate hearings. The rate structure effect would be to try to minimize it, minimize the impact on the low water rate, or water users. The hearing would be advertised with the, with the proposed rate structure. And then, again, one to two hearings to try to get the public's feedback and have you analyze the data and make an informed decision on what, which way you would like to go. So like any questions that you might have and any guidance you'd like to provide to us all on how to structure this moving forward?
Questions from the board?
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I think that your suggestion, the tiered increase over three years is good, gives people a chance to replace that leaky toilet or start to adjust their budgeting going forward. It's a good idea.
And like, like I said, I stole it from Steve Rafferty from two thousand and sixteen, but it seemed like a good idea to me, too.
Yeah, I like that idea as well.
Any suggestions or comments from you, Mr. Johnson Staub?
So, you know, I, I think they've done a great job. I, I think, as I said in my introduction, you know, we, we aren't required to rapidly get the water department to a fully self-funding situation. And I don't think that's the best approach here. I think what is being recommended is, is a good compromise approach that mitigates the, the financial burden on water users, but also, you know, we're not doing, I guess, on the flip side of that, to sort of make the case to encourage the board to act and adopt some form of rate increase, we're really not doing the rate payers or the residents any favors if we don't initiate and fund a regular water main replacement program. Because what it means is more emergency repairs, which are more destructive, sorry, more disruptive and more expensive. So I think the proposal that's being brought forward has a lot of merit. And if the board is willing to consider it, then, you know, we'd be delighted to advertise a hearing with those rates proposed. You'll have an opportunity to get input from the community and, and no rush, as Ed has suggested. You certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't expect you would make a decision on the first night of the hearing.
Mr. Zanty?
If anybody knows anything about water line, wa, water breaks are going to find the path of least resistance. And as we, as we fix these water lines, all it does is funnel to the, the more weaker areas anyway. So it's not going to fix itself. So we're going to have to do something proactive just like this to jump on it and, and try to catch it. Because if, if you saw the, the outlines of what these two pipes look like, once you feed a clean pipe into one of those, into a corporation, that's where you start seeing trouble, where you stop the new construction and it, and it, that pressure is all, all intact when it hits that old stuff. So I don't think we have a choice with this. We're going to be able to pay for it, too, so.
I agree.
Mr. Muscally?
I think we need to be proactive. We could have done it six or seven years ago. I think now's the time to take a serious look at it.
I'd agree. I'd agree as well. Mr. Brown?
Do we need a vote?
Do you want to move forward with hearings on the proposed schedule?
I'll move that.
I would second that, that we move forward as, as recommended with the tiered rate increase.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to presentation and discussion of delinquent real estate tax collection options. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, we are featuring Mr. Santeo this evening. He's going to describe a new approach to collection of delinquent property taxes. This approach will result in accelerated collection of taxes and reduce the staff time required to track amounts owed that date back multiple years. Most importantly, the process will be carefully managed to ensure that no one is evicted from their primary residence due to a bona fide inability to pay taxes. A select board vote is not required, but we want you to be aware of what the finance department is doing and why. And Ed will walk you through it.
Thank you.
And I want to recognize Patty O'Connell and Trish Favouli from the assessing department and the collector treasures department. And Lori, thank you for coming as well. We're, we have a lot of things that we have to fix in terms of, you know, a lot of things, you know, regular things that we have to do. So, you know, generating more revenue and, you know, having people routinely pay their taxes is important to the well-functioning government. So what we're going to do today is to review the problem and have some definitions of what the delinquent taxes or tax titles are, review some statistics on a high level, take a deeper dive into some statistics, talk about the outreach that we've done to folks like those in the affordable housing, Kim Fish, to try to uncover any opportunities we have to actually put together vacant pieces of land to help address the affordable housing issue, describe how we would do this process very sensitively and not try to, you know, push anybody out of their homes where this is their primary home. And just describe how the finance department is looking to proceed in trying to collect these, these taxes. So tax titles are severely delinquent taxes, taxes, tax titles are recorded at the registry of deeds. That ensures that, or helps ensure that people that have a lien on their property aren't able to sell their property without paying their taxes. That means that they have to take out a municipal lien certificate. I've seen situations where they haven't. But most times when there's a transaction, we're able to collect the money. I'll tell you, our collector treasures does a great job in terms of recording those liens. If you don't record the liens within a three-year period, you can't put those liens into the registry. You have to chase people in court. And that's very difficult. So that is not an issue at all in the town of Falmouth. And the tax titles convert the interest, which is really a penalty, from fourteen percent to sixteen percent to try to encourage people to pay their taxes. The issue with not paying taxes is you have a hole in your budget. You're not collecting these taxes on an annual basis, so you're missing out on the revenue the town needs to actually complete its operation. And then there's a fairness issue. Those people that pay their taxes, it's not fair to them that other people are not having to pay their taxes, in my mind, anyway. And then the example would be, we talked about subsidizing the water rates, for example. If the people aren't paying their taxes, but they're getting water, they're getting their water at a discount rate versus those that are actually paying their taxes, which helps supplement the, the water situation. There was an incredible increase in workload to try to manage these from year to year. And there's a huge hit on the free cash so that, you know, it's more difficult to fund the capital. The percentage you saw with Falmouth in terms of where it sits with its peer groups related to free cash, we can help address some of those types of things. The town of Falmouth has also been trying to get off an old system called Top Gun, which was the system before the current set of systems. And it has to be maintained because we're, that's the only place where we have the history. It was either too costly or not as possible to take the data from that system and move it over to the new system. So we'd like to clean up as much of this old stuff as possible and only push on to the new system, the, hopefully, smaller amount of tax liens so that we can stop paying for a system that might be ten years old that we haven't gotten, gotten off of yet. And we'd like to, you know, potentially at some point propose a new, new set of financial management systems. Tax liens, it's the biggest receivable that the town has, biggest uncollected receivable. And in certain circumstances, you know, you say, well, you're getting sixteen percent interest, that's great, just let it roll. In many cases, you're not going to recover the taxes. Could be unbilledable land that people aren't paying taxes on, so you may not get those, those taxes. And there may be a message that's being sent to these taxpayers that for maybe a couple of decades haven't been paying their taxes, that you really don't need to pay your taxes in the town of Falmouth. This is a chart just showing the growth of the tax titles over the years. Right now, we're at two point five million dollars, but it was at a respectable three hundred and nine million dollars, but it's grown dramatically since two thousand and four.
Three hundred and nine thousand.
Three, three hundred and nine thousand. Thank you. And this is where Falmouth sits in terms of its receivables versus the other Cape peer We've done some analysis of the, of the properties and it's great that you have long, or long time residents for their whole lives in Falmouth and they really know these properties and what the situations are. But it looks like we have twenty-nine residences or properties that are non-residents, folks that don't live in this property, it's their second home. Or it could be a rental property, try to capture that because we want to be sensitive to not, if somebody has a long-term lease, we want to be sensitive not to, you know, disrupt that particular situation as well. Twenty-five that are homeowners, eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Homeowners with P O boxes or people that have P O boxes in the town of Falmouth, we want to consider them just as though they're, they're homeowners until we know otherwise. One commercial property. Land of low value are properties that are land-only, unbilledable, twenty-four thousand and eight hundred, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and four dollars or less in value. Seventy-five of those, these are the ones that might be very difficult to collect on. And that amount is a mere eighty thousand dollars, not too bad. Land over, the land of low value limit, sixty, sixty-four properties, six hundred and sixty-four thousand for a total of two point five million dollars. Again, I point out the free cash levels. Again, if we take care of this situation and maintain this situation over time, we can push the percentage of Falmouth's free cash versus its peer group up a, a lot higher to address some of the issues that Falmouth has. And again, with the. And again, with the retained earnings. The way that we outreach to the different departments is we went to the GIS department, we asked them to put the vacant town land on the same map as the land of low-value property and the other vacant land, so that our team can take a look at those properties on a GIS map to say, can we piece together those categories of property to try to look for affordable housing, drainage, you know, anything related to wastewater, any recreational opportunities, et cetera. So we've had that outreach, the GIS map is there. Kim is working furiously to try to identify some opportunities. So, you know, those are some of the things that we're looking at as it relates to this. Trish, as we discussed, look at those properties that are probably underwater and, you know, totally unbilledable. Mailing addresses not in Falmouth, but owners are living in their home. Again, you know, the fact that your staff has been a part of this community their entire life makes that type of analysis very accurate, so we can, again, not look to disadvantage anyone. So a disabled person is living in a home and the bill is going off Cape, taken care of by a relative, you know, your team knows about those situations, and we'll make sure that we're sensitive about those situations. And it looks like two of the 182 properties may have year-round, long-term rentals based on looking at whether somebody has an excise tax bill for that particular property, a renter has an excise tax bill for that particular property. And then we have properties with payment plans. We have about seven out of 182 of these properties that, where people are, you know, have a payment plan and they are actively or sporadically paying their taxes. So again, we have a targeted approach for each one of these, not one size fits all. The land of low-value properties, again, no homes, no risk of homelessness would be one category. Other vacant land, again, no homes, no one living on them, hopefully. Commercial properties, non-resident homeowners, homeowners. And then also, there was analysis done of properties might be distressed or blighted. And this is another way to actually clean up those situations in the community. So for those that are land of low value, and to everybody, we're going to send a letter. I'm going to repeat that, you know, for all of these. The Department of Revenue has an expedited foreclosure process where you can, instead of incurring attorney's fees, you can set the properties into their system, do an analysis and determine which ones you can actually foreclose on, and then you have to do an auction, which is mandated by that process. And then we can potentially at that time look at other properties that may not be of strategic use to the town and bundle those into an overall foreclosed property auction, if that's appropriate. And then the other property target would be vacant land that hasn't been paid over the years. And again, send the letters. We would either do a foreclosure if it were something that was strategic to one of the other needs of the town, or we could do a tax lien auction, and we'll define what that is going forward. Again, no issue of putting somebody out of their home. Commercial warehouse is the, is the commercial property. That one would be a good target, I believe, for a tax lien auction, and we'll describe what that means. Those people that are living in their home, we're going to treat them, I'm sorry, these are non-residents, we're going to send a letter to them saying, do you have a one-year lease on that property or more? And if you do, let's work out a payment agreement. If you don't, then I think that's a great candidate for a tax lien auction. Again, we are trying to make sure that we are not risking anybody being homeless. And then for those people that are residents, what we want to do is actually more try to provide them help, try to give them a list that we've already started developing from, we took from another community and we're expanding it and trying to make it for Falmouth, which identifies the Falmouth, the Cape Cod, and the state resources that they might be able to utilize to actually reduce their expenses, you know. Make sure that you're on the lowest, low-income electric rates, low-income, you're getting fuel assistance. Are you reaching out to the food pantries? Are you doing or applying for the elderly tax exemptions, or are you a veteran, are you applying, and disabled, are you applying for those types of things? So those will be part of the letter and the outreach, more about trying to help them solve the problem of their overall expense lows to see if there is any room to do a tax payment plan. We wouldn't do any tax lien auctions, we wouldn't go to foreclosure, we're just going to try to, you know, work with those individuals. The statistics are that up to 40% of the individuals will, if we do a tax lien auction, I want to define what that is, you're actually selling the receivable. And you're not selling it like a private sector business at a discount, you're selling it at 100% of what the town is owed. And then in many cases, if you bundle it properly, you'll actually get a premium over and above what the town is owed related to certain types of properties. So up to 40% of individuals will pay before there's an auction, up to 99% of them will pay before foreclosure, and nobody's going to allow their home to be foreclosed on with the values of that, you know, the home values that you have in Falmouth and the rising rates. When you look at the taxes versus the overall value of the homes, the spread is incredible. So it's just been a matter of, you know, maybe they can't afford it, maybe they're having issues, but if they're second homeowners, you know, they really should be paying their taxes to the town. But somebody might be underwater with both the combination of their taxes, their mortgage, and all these other types of things combined, so that could be an issue. And then if there are any environmental problems or blighted properties, we can use this mechanism, if it's not a homeowner, to try to clean those up more quickly than we would be able to otherwise. And that's been proven out in many cases. And then if somebody is taken into land court and that's what, if you auctioned it, that's the first thing somebody's going to do, they're going to put the property in land court because they know they've ignored the town for, you know, decades, potentially, on paying their taxes. So that's a way to get somebody's attention. If we were to do it without doing tax lien auctions and put all these properties into land court, it's the same process. But what happens is, and we're going to warn them, their attorney's, their attorney's fees, whether the town does it or we do it via tax lien auction, there are additional fees that are applied, it's better to clean it up before it goes through the tax lien auction or foreclosure.
Just a question. How does this impact staffing? I mean, this sounds like a big job. Do we have the staffing in place to be able to accomplish this now, or will we have to add staffing?
So I've done this in the past, and I've taken it on, most of it, the line share. So what we put in place in order to do these statistics, we had to combine the assessing database data with the billing database data to pull together the attributes of both. And then you have to, you know, send out these letters and, you know, do the notices to the individuals, put an ad in the paper. So I've done that before, and I've tried to do it through automation as opposed to staffing. The staff is already up to their eyeballs in work, and they do a great job. So I'm trying not to put a huge burden, although they want to...
What's, do we need added staffing or we don't? Is that...
Well, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, Patty O'Connell, treasure collector. Because my department used to do the beach, the dump, and the shellfish permits, we were inundated. We couldn't do all that and get in, get our hands into the tax title. So now that that is now being done through the town clerk's office, we have plenty of staff to take this on, and we look forward to, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
But it is a lot of work, and they've already done a lot of work, Trish and Patty, to get there, so it's not painless. But then, you know, once we get the redemptions, that's additional work, you know, payment plans, so, yeah, thank you, Patty. Again, as we look at the tax lien auctions, you get 100% of the principal interest in attorney's fees. The auction may result in more revenue, tax lien premiums. The investor's goals, most of the time, if, unless it's a niche situation, is the 16% interest. It's not the foreclosure of the property. The new tax lien holders, if they want to maintain their position as the first entity that's able to recover these taxes, and that the taxes are ahead of mortgages and other liens that might be applied to a particular property. Again, most of the people will pay off by just sending them a letter and letting them know that we're going to do something more aggressively than has been done in the past. And then, you know, if we choose to, depending on the volumes, we can do this process yearly, and that's why we want to try to mechanize it as much as we can. There's a code of conduct that we write into the registration for those people that would do the tax lien auctions, to make sure that they treat the property owners in the town fairly, otherwise they wouldn't be able to participate in an auction in the future. And the summary of the notifications that these individuals get, they get, you know, tax bills, you know, twice a year, letters of delinquency, they get, you know, the second billing, demand notices, letters before you outsource to the deputy collectors, deputy collectors send out demands due, we'll send letters before the tax liens, the attorneys follow up with the tax liens, and that would be the town's, actually, the town's attorney is, Patty, because she is, does, you're not, that's the quality of your staff, you're not actually outsourcing this to a tax title attorney. Patty's been doing that and the legal ads, and the attorneys have been just filing those at the Registry of Deeds. And, you know, again, we'll collect the money from those that want to pay before anything happens, and then you, we'll send the tax lien auction letters, and there'll be newspaper notifications. And there are newspaper notifications when the items are actually put into tax lien as well. So these individuals have received, you know, information over and over and over again over the years, and there just wasn't a lot of meat behind, you know, the efforts to do it. And again, people were inundated with a lot of work. So targeted letters, land of low value, vacant land, commercial and property owners. We'll reach out to the homeowners, providing a list of, you know, two-page list of resources that we've identified. We have a person that's working for elder services, they pay for them to work for the town, and we give them training, and they help us out with work, and she's working on the resources list, updating the resources list, and those will go to everybody indicating that, you know, perhaps you have a piece of vacant land, you want to keep it in your family, maybe you just don't have enough additional room in your budget, so these are ways maybe you can help out, you know, to keep that vacant land as well. So any questions? There's a lot.
Sure, there's be a lot of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So if a person is in their house, they can't scrape together the money to pay their taxes, I know you don't want to make them homeless, you're going to try to offer them this help, if there's no way that they can be helped, if there's no better options that we come up with, what happens? It just rides until that person passes and then the lien is enacted? You still put the lien on the house? How does that go?
The lien is on the house initially, and then subsequent are put on the books every year. So, you know, that's what I've done in the past, and that list will whittle down over time, unfortunately, with, you know, certain people leaving the homes for some reason or another.
Right.
I just, you know, I just wasn't looking to, you know, push that particular situation. If you tell me I should, then, then great, but, you know, I'm going to probably go visit them all and say, you know what, I know their circumstances, but I'd rather not do that and I'd rather just let it ride.
I would not, you'd rather do that either because, you know, who wants that? Time is on our side, eventually, there's going to be a transaction and we'll get the money back. If I have another...
And that, and that would just definitely be for somebody where there's a piece of property. Now, vacant land, you may not get your money back.
Now, when a person is in trouble and they're looking to get on that payment plan, like those seven folks that are doing that, can we give them a break from that 16%?
No, state law.
Yeah, no chance of that. Okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I want to say that part of the outreach will be to discuss tax deferrals. So that would be a situation if they are, their income level is such that they can qualify for a tax deferral, the interest rate goes from 16% to 8%.
Okay. There we go, that's...
I have a question about distressed properties. So when there's a distressed property and someone is paying the taxes on it, and there's nothing we can do about those properties?
Not in this way. There are other ways, but not, not in this way.
Okay. So it's only if it's distressed properties and people are paying the taxes on it?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I got another one.
Go ahead.
The undervalued properties that are likely vacant, is there a mechanism where the town could offer a buyout and then make that into like a community garden? I was talking to a couple kids, young, I shouldn't call them kids, young gentlemen who are in farming Falmouth. I think they were both agricultural graduates, and they were both saying how new farming techniques could allow a small one-acre or half-acre parcel to really produce a lot of food with what they call vertical farming. And they were saying that if farming Falmouth had an opportunity to have some small parcels around town, they could educate the neighbors how to produce a lot of food, and it was really interesting talking to these young gentlemen who, they were saying that how so, so little amount of land could make us really self-sufficient with food, and I was really surprised and encouraged to hear that. Is there any mechanism for that?
Well, there is town-owned property that's vacant now. So we, you know, through that GIS map, you know, that, those parcels could be reviewed. Obviously, we don't want to impair any of the water sources.
Right.
But if it was away from a water source, then there's already existing town-owned land. In addition, through the land of low value, the expedited foreclosure, that would probably free up a significant amount of property as well. So, yeah, we can do that, it's the, how many acres do they want, I guess in other words.
Well, I got the impression that they were just thinking of, just give me the idea that small parcels could be helpful. And I always thought of farms as, you know, had to be big.
Right.
And I just wonder, is there a way that...
And you have that opportunity now.
Right, I understand, we haven't really explored that yet, but through the auction as well.
Through the auction as well, yeah.
But that's kind of...
You can go buy it if you want.
Yeah. Well, I don't think I would buy an unbilledable lot because I'm not a farmer, but I would just say that. I'm wondering if there's a way that the town could make it an easy transition from that property being just sitting there in trouble, rather than forcing a foreclosure sale, could the town offer a buyout, or would it have to be a separate entity?
You would have to come up with some funds. Now, I don't know if you could consider this to be open space, and you can use CPA funds.
Hmm.
But, you know, somebody could put together a proposal to go in that direction, but I think, I think you have sufficient land to do that now, to do that type of demonstration on already property that's been foreclosed on perhaps a few decades ago?
Mm-hmm.
That is available and vacant, and you can take a look at that, yeah.
I wouldn't want to exclude any buildable lots, but the undervalued ones are certainly of interest.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is go through a foreclose, foreclosure process. If, when you do the auction, nobody buys it, the town will own it.
Oh, I see. So that will likely be a lot of those.
Yeah, yeah, a significant number.
Ms. Scott Price, did you have a question?
My question is going down a rabbit hole we don't have to discuss. I'll ask, I'll ask it by the time.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, that's very interesting.
Yeah, this is a...
So if the board is comfortable, we, the Finance Department, will proceed with this approach that has been outlined. Again, there is no, it does not require select board approval, but we, it's a new approach, and, you know, we think it's a very sensitive approach, but also one that's going to result in catching up on some of our collections. So, you know, in case you hear, you know, what's this about the town selling tax liens, yes, you know, you now have an idea of exactly how we are approaching it in a careful way.
Mr. Fenner, did you want to come up and make a comment?
Yeah, Mark Fenner in Grand Ave. I was unaware that this was, process was going on, but last month I met with Ms. Scott Price and Kim, the housing coordinator, on, with a couple of things about affordable housing... Price and Kim, the housing coordinator, with a couple of things about affordable housing. One is, I'm contemplating another amendment to the accessory dwelling bylaws, I amended it before. And secondly was, I identified two pieces of property that are tax delinquent, just land, raw land, and I didn't notice in here any method for us to just try to purchase some of this land outright from delinquent homeowners before all the other process goes through. The couple of parcels that I'm aware of are not insignificant, a total of about 20 acres, and the owners, it's a family, it's been 100 years, I guess it's been in the family, but an update on that, if some bottom fisherman has approached these people, probably has a program that goes and searches delinquent tax properties, but I was wondering, this is just a suggestion, wouldn't it, I know the selectmen have many affordable housing dollars that they oversee, and I do know that I have, in the past, I had an article about affordable housing, there's $100,000 sitting, obviously in an account, it was voted by town meeting, it will not be used. What I'm getting at is, why wouldn't the selectmen give the affordable housing coordinator like $100,000 or some walking-around money, so to speak, that she might be able to negotiate with some of these landowners and just buy this stuff up quick and get the train out of the station much faster? I didn't notice any allowance for that, but...
I think Mr. Santio has an answer to your question. Thank you, Mr. Fenner.
Part of the outreach to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Trust and the other folks giving them the map was to try to piece together the ability to obtain properties either through foreclosure or utilizing the funds they already have, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Trust to go purchase those properties.
Perfect. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Miss Gallo?
Could we ask for a report on the progress of this process, maybe six months out, something like that?
We certainly could. Any other questions from the board? Any other comments? Yes, sir.
If I can, thank you, Steve Bjorkland again. I'm a butter fisherman. I do buy tax title properties, but I don't like to take advantage of people. So one of the things that happens on these parcels that are potentially buildable, which there's significant tax dollars that are due to the town, some of them are up to $60,000 or $70,000, and I'm not sure about Falmouth yet, because again, it's my first meeting here, but some towns will not allow a developer to go forward to obtain permits unless all the taxes are paid. And the only thing that I would say to the selectmen here, if you have the ability to waive that requirement, if it's in your bylaws that all the taxes have to be paid before building permits are issued, or actually, before they're applied for, you may give some developers the ability to go to some of these people and increase the value of their property so that all the taxes can be paid, and then the town becomes whole, where if you auction something off that has a high dollar value, it could be worth an awful lot more, but I would get all the advantage of that. It makes more sense, I think, if you could tie it into receiving a building permit. So if a homeowner is behind, they happen to own one of these pieces, it would give me the ability to try to help them increase that value. So that's all, if you understand what I'm saying. And I've done this in other towns, and it works out quite well. It helps the people out, and it does give the town pretty much 100% of the tax value of that property, once a builder knows he can get a building permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
More good work.
Okay, we'll move on to the update Emerald Properties Affordable Housing and Community Play Space Plan, and you have five minutes for an update.
For the record, my name is Judd Cornoch, your town planner. I'm here with Kim Fish, your housing coordinator, she's been mentioned many times tonight, so we might just give her a moment to speak on this important topic. But speaking of town-owned land that the town is trying to pursue affordable housing for, as well as bring an all-inclusive, multi-generational play space, this is the Emerald Properties project. You may remember back in February, we were before you, and up on the screen is the master plan that we discussed at that time. It includes, in orange, as you can see on the screen, the one and a half acres set aside for the play space I just mentioned. Also in blue is the historic Emerald property, Emerald House property, I should say. In green is the community gardens, and in yellow is the potential affordable housing. What you see on the screen also is the white area, that was what we were considering at a staff level to be undevelopable land due to a 200-foot riverfront boundary, and that boundary is shown on the screen, I'll just use the cursor to indicate that right here. So we're back tonight with some good news. Some bad news as well, but we'll highlight the good news. The good news is that that white area has shrunk. So after that meeting, where we sought your approval to move forward with the civic engagement program, it came to our attention, through others, that there was a scaling issue on the plan that was developed by our consulting engineer. And as you can see, this new line, this purple line here, is actually the 200-foot riverfront boundary. So unfortunately, at the time, they were just misrepresenting the area that would be considered to be undevelopable. So we're happy that, you know, that came to our attention, we were able to have the conceptual plan corrected. And before you tonight is essentially our revised master plan, which essentially dragged to the west both of the accessible play space areas, as well as the potential affordable housing for that property.
Could you go back, just...
Absolutely.
I always ask the chair. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Miss Gallo.
No, no, I just wanted to see what was there before, that's all. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I didn't want to do too many back and forths, but we'll just do one just so you can see the difference in the two plans. So we're happy to bring this forward, you know, unfortunately, there was a pause in the civic engagement program, but we're ready to go. Kim and I are ready to answer any questions you might have. Included, I'll just make a note of this, included in your packet for tonight was the actual plan itself that we received from the consultants, which I'm happy to show for the audience and the folks at home.
Is that a new consultant?
No, it is not. And so, again, I'll just highlight the particulars of the plan, so this purple line indicates that 200-foot riverfront boundary. We also felt it was important to sort of declutter that area, there was a lot of different colored lines that would make explaining that to the public perhaps a bit difficult. And I'll just note that that white area is essentially, you know, this back portion here, and as I zoom in, you can see that these very faint lines indicating topography challenges. And so for those two reasons, that area of the conceptual plan was determined to be unbuildable. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have, offer Kim an opportunity to speak tonight, but I do want to just emphasize the fact that, you know, if with your approval to move forward, we're off to the races. We have the same program that we had before, we'll be meeting with the Commission on Disabilities. In fact, we've talked with Kathleen at length about this new plan, so we're all very excited about it, and we're looking forward to moving forward with our civic engagement.
Ms. Scott Price?
What was the bad news?
The bad news is that we had to pause everything.
Oh, okay.
So small bad news, but major goodness.
Yeah, the good news way out, way is the bad news. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I like the new plan, it's a big improvement.
Yeah, and it's all good news. So thank you very much.
Do we need to vote to move that forward, accept this plan?
Is there any comment from... Uh, hang on one second, I don't think that we need to do a vote.
I don't believe you need to vote.
I think we just need to continue to support it.
Consensus of the board, right.
Would someone like to make a comment? Sure. Come to the podium, please, and introduce yourself.
This one here. Yeah, I'm Del Rosso, I live at 87 Davisville, which is right here, and we have a group of neighbors that haven't really been contacted about this.
Well, they're just getting started to bring it to us.
And that's the bad news, that was the bad news, that they had to stop doing anything until they corrected the plan. So they haven't done a...
So now they engage, and how does that look?
And I'll let either Kim or Judd speak to that.
So we will be going out to the public. Well, we have plans to set up a meeting at the East Falmouth School for everyone in that area to attend, and we'll give a full presentation based on the original presentation we made in February. And that presentation is recorded, and you can watch that if you want to see a preliminary one.
Kim, can you just overview the whole process? So that's the next step, and then just, you want to do a thumbnail sketch on the whole process from now to construction?
Without any notes in front of me, without any notes in front of me, so bear with me, please. Once we get your approval to move forward with this, with the new plan, we will then, our first stop will be hopefully with the East Falmouth, the group of the butters and everyone in that area, we'll set up a meeting there, but we also will go to the Commission on Disabilities, the Rec Committee, and various other boards and committees. And then we'll gather all that information, we do have a website that's live for public comment, and then we'll gather all that information and bring it back to the select board and see where we want to go there, because we want to refine an RFP process as well. And so then, after all the civic engagement, and we come back to you with that information, and then we'll refine the RFP, and then we'll send the RFP out for bid, and then we'll go from there, hire a developer, and hopefully have this project going.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Kim, you did wonderfully, I put you on the spot, I apologize. So I just want to emphasize that the, after the civic engagement, we issue a request for proposals that seeks to sell the property to a developer. What the request for proposals does is it outlines what are the town's criteria for selecting a developer to purchase and build out the property. Two separate pieces, so the RFP would be the affordable housing, the play space would continue to be owned and developed by the town itself. But I also wanted to add on that once the town, you know, if the RFP is successful, we enter a purchase and sale agreement with a developer, and they will have to go through a permitting process, so they will be going through a zoning board of appeals permitting process, so that will be another opportunity for the neighbors to weigh in.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Brown?
In that RFP, would there be advantageous consideration to 100% affordable, it might want to be a local initiative program, or a lower dollar figure maybe?
So that's what this civic engagement process is about, and ultimately what the select board will decide, is what are your criteria going to be to determine, you know, what your preferences are for this property?
And if I could just ask one last thing?
Go ahead.
This, I know this is just conceptual, and it has yet to be fully engineered, but am I looking at a 22-unit concept here?
Yes, there's 44 bedrooms here.
Okay.
Right now.
That's the initial thought.
That's the initial thought. But again, when it goes out to the developer, this is just a proposal, just to give an idea of what we could put there.
Right.
But it will be ultimately up to the developer in what they can do, and what their finances are, and what the zoning board, what they can do, and then wastewater is always an issue.
Of course. Very good, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, you do. My name is Megan Rogers, and I live on Rose Idol Run, which is probably built right here next to the Del Rosso's, our children playing in those woods. I was just wondering, is it possible, is this information anywhere for the people right now that are concerned about it to see? Is this on the Emerald Properties housing site? Has it been updated? This, this, once we get approval from the select board to move forward, that this will be uploaded to the website, and then we'll be fully updated? Okay. And I think another, I'm not sure if I'm not supposed to ask these questions yet, if there's more to go from it, but as far as the play space, is that being built simultaneously with the housing? Or is one a priority over the other? My priority is the play space.
Okay. Ms. Haines, hang on, please. Go ahead.
So we're going through a master planning process to get input on the whole thing, but then once the select board decides, you know, whether or not to move forward and with what sort of a master plan, it will be two parallel projects. At that point, they become separate. So the housing will proceed through an RFP process, and the play space build-out will go through an internal town, there will likely be an application to the Community Preservation Committee, and then a town meeting appropriation to build out the play space.
So does it sound like the play space is further behind in the planning development parts, or...
You know, we haven't refined the timelines, I think they're, you know, roughly in terms of years, about the same.
Okay. And is municipal, is part of it so municipal use only? Where the play space is, is that cannot be built on?
So there are two parcels of land, the one to the north, you see that line in the middle? Right. So the Emerald Property to the north will remain municipal forever, and the parcel to the south, if the housing proposal moves forward, the parcel to the south would become privately owned.
And is it still a possible 44 to 90 beds? Or is the, have those numbers changed as well? Do you want to read that? We have spoken extensively with our, with Scott McGann at the Health Department, and it really will be contingent upon what DEP does with their regulations. They're in the process of changing them, and we just don't know yet. If they change it, then we'll probably, it would have to stay, it may have to stay down to the lower end of 44. Right now, the way the regulations are written, if it's an IA system, it can go up to 90 bedrooms.
Thank you.
What's IA system? Sorry, you want to explain the technical part?
I can answer the acronym. It's Innovative Alternative, and so it's enhanced nitrogen-reducing septic system. But what I would do, what I would say is, you know, just for tonight's presentation, perhaps what we can ask is that they just go by the planning department, we can answer the questions for them. Anyone who has a question, come by the planning department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to update Knobscallite land disposition.
I think we want to do the Commission on Disabilities annual report.
I have it differently on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'm going to...
Thank you. I have the opposite, I noticed the same thing.
So this is an exciting next step for this iconic property. The federal government recently issued a notice of availability for Knobscallite, which is the first step in a lengthy process by which ownership of the property will be transferred from the Coast Guard to a municipal or private entity. The property is currently leased by the Coast Guard to the town, and the town in turn has a license agreement with the Friends of Knobscallite, a private nonprofit, to manage the property. In anticipation of this announcement, Associate Town Council Brian Tobin, who is with us tonight, and I have been working with Friends of Knobscallite President Kathy Walrath, who is here this evening, to evaluate options for the future ownership and management of this property. Both the town and the Friends are eligible to apply for ownership of the Knobscallite property. The next step is for the select board to determine whether to submit a letter of interest to acquire the property. to acquire the property from the United States Government Services Administration, to submit the letter to the U.S. General Services Administration. The Friends of Nobska Light has already submitted a letter of interest of their own. I'm going to, we're going to have Kathy Walrath spend a couple of minutes to describe the incredible stewardship of the property under the Friends. And then we will have Attorney Tobin outline for us the potential for a letter of interest and the next steps from there.
Okay, and we've allotted fifteen minutes for the presentation.
Great, and I will respect your time. I'm Kathy Walrath, President and CEO for the Friends of Nobska Light. I'm honored and grateful to be here tonight to give you a brief update on the work that we have done at Nobska. As many of you are aware, and as was just outlined to you, the Friends of Nobska Light, through a memorandum of understanding with the town and a license with the U.S. Coast Guard, began its work back in 2015. It was a five-year license that has subsequently been renewed in 2021. Since 2015, the Friends have secured support through grants from organizations like Community Preservation, the Mass Cultural Council, as well as donations from many individuals in the Nobska community. Because of the success of our fundraising, we were able to fully restore the lighthouse tower between 2018 and 2019. I'm sure many of you remember how it was shrouded and covered for a few months. We've also rehabilitated the exterior of the Keeper's House between 2019 and 2020. And despite the complexities of a global pandemic, between 2020 and this past week, we are just about, have just about completed the rehabilitation of the interior of the Keeper's House. This space, while maintaining the look and feel of a home, now flows nicely to be able to accommodate a maritime museum. But more importantly, the rehab also included changes that support access and compliance with the American Disabilities Act standards. In addition, over the past year, we have modified the site at Nobska. The iconic vista is still there, but what we have done is create a path from dedicated parking all the way up to the tower and the Keeper's House that is also compliant with ADA access standards. So this will be the first time in Nobska's history that individuals with special needs will be able to go up to that iconic lighthouse. Finally, we have a museum committee that was established a couple of years ago. That committee, along with the board, are currently engaged in planning for the content of the museum with designer Roger Westerman. The transformation is amazing, and it is functional. We are proud of all the accomplishments, and we look forward to opening the site and the Keeper's House sometime this season. As I mentioned earlier, our license and memorandum of understanding is valid through 2016. But like Mr. Peter Johnson Staub just explained, last August, the Coast Guard notified the General Services Administration that the town, that the property is access for the Coast Guard. So now it will begin the process of divestiture and turning it over at no cost to either a municipality or a nonprofit with no, with no cost. It's a long process, and I believe, Mr. Tobin is going to go through that process for us?
Sure.
Yes, you. Okay. I look forward to that, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Kathy. Brian Tobin, Associate Town Council. So I'm not going to go into exceptional detail regarding the process, because this is the first of what's more than, like, if my understanding is correct, Peter, is it's going to be more than one meeting that we're going to have on this, and we're not actually voting today. Is that accurate?
So there are multiple steps in the process, but in terms of the board making a decision to send a letter of interest, the hope was to have the full discussion tonight, and then a consent agenda vote later. So, yeah, this is the night for full understanding.
So this is a preliminary meeting. So the application process effectively takes a number of steps. The first is, a prospective applicant would submit the letter of intent. As Peter mentioned, Friends of Nobska has already done that. The town has not yet done that. That would then garner an invitation to a site visit. So everybody who submits a letter of intent, passes the preliminary screening via GSA, would then get invited to a site visit. The site visit would effectively consist of exchange of information. It's a chance for the people considering the applications to meet the applicants, and also the, a chance for the applicants to ask questions. Everybody who attends the site visit then receives an application. You then would submit the application, and it could take six months, it could take two years. They would then decide and act upon it. As Kathy mentioned, the winner of the application process, so to speak, to use late terms, would receive Nobska Lighthouse, naturally subject to federal restrictions and an understanding that would be preserved in perpetuity. So how, what does that mean for the Select Board? What does that mean for us this evening? We, as Peter mentioned, met with Friends of Nobska, met with Kathy. In fact, it initially came to our, this application process initially came to our attention on account of the vigilance of Friends of Nobska. We are very fortunate to have them as friends, not just of Nobska, but of the town, and to, to work with us and have productive discussions regarding this process. Where our discussions ultimately landed is that at this stage, we think it best for both the Friends of Nobska, as they have already done, as well as the town, which has not yet submitted a letter, to submit a letter of intent. The reason for that relates to the application process that I just delineated, is that if we don't submit a letter of intent, we don't get invited to the site visit, and therefore, we won't have any option at all to apply. We think it best to keep our options open, because we will gather additional information at the site visit itself that will inform us as to, you know, the relative strengths of the different positions and different applications. For example, would an application from Friends of Nobska with, say, a letter of support from the town be a stronger application? Would an application from the town itself be a stronger application? The good news is, is that we share common goals with the Friends of Nobska, and that this program is set up in line with the goals of the town, which is to preserve Nobska Lighthouse for all that it is. Its beauty, its sanctity, its iconic symbol of the essence of Falmouth, historic purposes, public use purposes, keeping it open to the public, educational purposes, the list goes on. The benefit it adds to the common good. So.
That's it. So the, you know, there may be, there's a more interesting decision later down the road as to who's going to submit an application for ownership. We think this step is pretty easy, because we just want to keep our options open, and we do that by submitting a letter of intent.
Yeah, it seems obvious to me.
I agree. Yeah.
Yes.
I just have a point of clarification. The Friends of Nobska Light have not yet submitted their letter. We will do that after our board meeting on Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
That's okay.
Okay. Do I still think we should send a letter?
Yeah. I move that we do send a letter of intent indicating our interest in the property. Second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Four minutes to spare.
We're going to, just as a point of order, we will put that on a consent agenda, only because the agenda didn't say vote. But thank you for that clarification. We have your direction, and we'll re-vote it.
Great. Thank you.
I'm going to run to the restroom.
Okay. Ms. Haines, you are up. Commission on Disabilities Annual Report. Mr. Johnson Staub, do you want to say anything?
Nope, I'm happy to hand off to Kathleen.
As you said in your report, I'm Kathy Haines, chairperson of Commission on Disabilities. I gave you my.
A written report, yes.
Well, first of all, we have one able-bodied seat and two disability seats still open. But one of those able-bodied seats is about to close. I know somebody's going to apply. So that's just a formality that's being worked out. And that means, without a full membership, we have not had a quorum since November, except for this past May, it was the first time since November, which meant we had a backlog of financials from November to May to approve. That is a travesty, because we have a lot of money involved with packing fees. They come to us, and there's the opportunity for grants and things like that. And if we don't meet, we don't have people on board, we don't know who's out there, who may need services from us. So it always helps to have enough people who have different interests in town that we know there's money that we can grant to an organization that benefits the most disabled. There is a caveat to the money. It's not just freely given. But what we have done in the past year, we've had the Wellness Fair, which was just in April, which we had fifteen vendors, which is down significantly from the past. We've had up to fifty vendors in the past. The difference is, pandemic hit. We didn't have the fair for two years. We had not so much trouble getting vendors. They had problem getting people to sit at their table for four hours. The volunteerism just isn't there. People did not want to represent their organization and sit and have good meals and good time, because vendors love it. They get to hobnob with each other, find out who's got what benefit their client can use. And the vendors love networking, and it's always a big success in that regard. Again, because of the pandemic, we only brought in maybe thirty people to the whole day, which is disappointing for the vendors and for the commission, but the people who did come all found something that they could use. And they came by word of mouth. They came from the article in the enterprise. We had posters up. We had signs around town. So we did have people come in from those areas, but there's always room for improvement. And we're hoping next year, we can bring in more people. And along with the Wellness Fair in December for International Persons with Disability Day, which is a United Nations-sponsored worldwide day, we sponsored the obstacle course. And again, we got very little traffic in. It's a lot of work for a little traffic, and it's disappointing, because not even the town fathers show up. Nobody comes from the town committees. The Select Board didn't show up. Nobody, you know, my people said, why aren't anybody from even the Select Board here? And it's true. You know, you work your butt off. You got three people in a wheelchair, in wheelchairs, and you've got a couple of other people running around like cats with the, you know, chasing mice, because we're trying to get the things set up. We're trying to get people to help out. It just seems like every time we do something, there's an obstacle. The obstacle course, there was tryouts for the band. There was a production going on at the high school. There was SATs. So we couldn't get any help with volunteers. For the Wellness Fair, it was Earth Day. So we were bad in a thousand, no matter what we've tried this year. But we've tried, and we've tried to bring the word of what the disabled need in this town to the different factions in the town to increase accessibility. I mean, I brought up the packing things at Plaza. Those handicap parking signs have been sitting in the garden area for two years. That particular landlord has been brought for the Architectural Access Board, but because the Architectural Access Board lacks a person who goes out and does the finding out and submitting the complaints to the person that they need to, they haven't been filed yet. But there are people in Falmouth who have served papers for not going by accessibility standards this year. And that's something that the commission is very strong about, that if there is a violation and the commission sees it with parking signs, there is a state statute how parking signs ought to be erected, we'll tag it. And we're not going to apologize for it. There's no need for it. When a business owner purposely takes his handicap parking signs out of his parking lot and stuffs them laying down on a planted bed that's even trashed, there's no need for it. And it's not fair to the disabled who have handicap placards, who need those parking spaces and can't have them, because the police can't ticket those cars, because there's no handicap parking sign. As long as that sign is not there, a car cannot be tagged by the police. And that is sad. It's really sad. So that's my spiel on that. But as far as beaches, we've been working with Jim Brady. There's consensus on where the mats are going to go, at least from what Jim showed me, and what the beach superintendent has agreed to. They'll go to the high tide mark this year, for the most part. He's had wealth of applications for people to maintain the beaches, so there's, looks like a good possibility that the mats won't have to be moved like they was feared. The mats will be able to be put out and maintained, and the beaches maintained at the same time, because he'll have the full crew. And the last thing that came up tonight was the place space, and that is moving forward, full speed ahead. And I warn you, I'm not going to go at a slow pace. I will be coming before you to try and get money through the CPC this round to help with more design plans. The only thing we're missing right now is the master plan from the landscape architect. We have plans. We have the design. We have the land now. Now we just need to have the master plan that was supposedly commissioned, but whether he actually did it or not, we don't know. And specifically, a specific landscape architect we use is too busy right now to take on the project. So it's whether he actually did the master plan, or if we're going to have to go to somebody else to get the master plan from the plans that he drew up. But the plans that we have of what is going to be in the place space now, it's, we may have to flip one side to another. Like the ninja course, you'd have to go onto the opposite side than what it's laid out now. But as far as the plans themselves, those are the same plans we're going to use. And I think I've given you the plans in the past in your packets, so you have a general idea of what the plan is. In fact, Peter McConaughey is going to look into a quote, sort of, on how much it would cost to take down the top level of the place space to make room for a playground. But then we have to fill it in, and then we have to plant the trees and the landscape and all that stuff before it's final. And let's hope it doesn't take another six years. It's been six years too long. So that's the end.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Mr. Brown?
Hi, Kathleen. I just, I did notice in your note that you wish some Select Board people came, and, you know, I looked at my emails. I didn't see any invitation or request for attendance from you or.
I don't see that invitation. The general idea is that, boy, are you truly aware of the activities, because we come before you for, put signs out, there are signs in town.
And you had an article.
It's in the paper. It's around, and just nobody ever shows up. And I don't get offended. I know things. But I have people on my committee who aren't used to not seeing others there.
I don't know.
And they're new to the committee work, and it's like, well, how come those people don't come? We worked our butt off, but they didn't show up.
You know, you can't just assume that we've already put it on our calendar.
I know. I understand that.
And it's been a, we've had difficulties with the days and with volunteers, and we've looked at doing it a different day this upcoming year. It's been a struggle to get it to become successful, but I think the committee is doing a great job at it. But there were signs. We had signs.
Yeah. I actually got four, I sent out self-addressed, self-sanated envelopes to get surveys back from vendors.
Two activities, two events ahead.
And I got pulled back today, and it was very good.
Positive.
It was positive stuff. But they too mentioned not many people came through, or not enough vendors, and suggesting things that we tried, they just didn't work.
I just want to say, I know it seems obvious to you because you're the one doing the work, but just a couple of minutes to send an email to the select board and say, hey, reminder, we're having this event. And, you know, and then we'll mention it at the meeting and an announcement and try to get the buzz going a little bit more. And we usually coordinate and somebody tries to show up at as many of these events as we can. So I'm sorry, nobody was there.
My answer should have, I have to answer to people who aren't used to...
Well, we'll try a little better next time.
I'm sure you will.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for your work. Okay.
Okay, we will move on. Presentation and vote to support an application to Mass Development for redevelopment of 545 Main Street for workforce housing. And we have slated 10 minutes for you, Mr. Glaso, because you're looking for us to support this.
Can you turn that gavel into a magic wand and just approve this?
I'll go quickly.
Do you want to make the motion?
No, I don't mean just the letter. I mean the whole project.
That would be nicer.
Yeah.
Peter, is it on here?
Did you send it to, if you sent it to Diane, I'm sure she loaded it.
No, I sent it to you.
I did not.
Okay. Okay, then make it quicker.
Talk us through it, Mr. Glaso.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to Ms. Taylor and to Mr. Mascali. Congratulations on your election. So I'll give you a quick background. I did have a little presentation that would take you visually through the project, but it's 545 Main Street, it's a former Royal Nursing Home. It sits on an acre and a half of land. It's a 52,000 square foot building, currently permitted for 121 beds. It has 73 parking spaces. It's own business redevelopment. It does have Mr. Cod overlay. It's connected to town sewer. It's right on the sea line bus route. And we've been at three planning board meetings. The primary issue that's remaining, we're scheduled to be there tomorrow night, not sure we'll get through or not, is finding off-street parking. We have, through the redesign, meeting the new requirements for the site plan, we went from 73 parking spots to 53, so we lost 20 parking spots through that redesign of the parking lot. We had to get the fire truck all the way around the building now. We had to make sure there's adequate room to back up the garbage truck, even though they've been collecting garbage there for a number of years. And because the town has bigger parking spots, I thought we had smaller cars than we did in 1969, but now we have bigger parking spots. We lost a number of parking spots. So we're working diligently to find some off-site parking. We need 35 off-site parking spots. We're also taking a look at a creative way of maybe doing this as a mixed-use project with Mr. Cod, because Mr. Cod does allow for reduction in parking. The business redevelopment zone does not allow a reduction in parking, only if you have office and retail. It doesn't address residential. So Jed in the planning department and Kim and our assistant town planner and Peter have all been working hard to figure out how we're going to permit this. Right now, we're looking at permitting it has commercial accommodations, but we will have some restrictions on that because commercial accommodation is a motel. It means we can rent the rooms, you know, on a daily basis. That's not our intention. So we're looking at using it just as a way to get through the permit process with some restrictions that we can only rent the rooms on a monthly basis and that at a minimum 25% will be affordable. But we will be looking at doing more than 25%. So we're trying to incorporate the restrictions that are under Mr. Cod into a commercial establishment designation. And hopefully, we get through it and we're able to end up with 71 housing units is what we're considering having, 43 single rooms, 20 studios, 61 bedrooms. We'll have a total of 62 total baths, both full and half baths. We are, we'll have a community kitchen. This is very similar to projects I've done previously out in California when I was out there for a number of years. It's sort of communal housing, but it really serves the workforce. It serves the people who work in the community, and that's what we're after. And one of the reasons why this isn't a 40B or any other type of, sort of the standard affordable housing project is that, as you know, most of those require, and even Mr. Cod requires, that we have a minimum of a one-year lease. So almost every affordable housing project that we've done in town that has any type of restrictions, or if it's a 40B or funding from state sources, requires that you have a minimum of a one-year lease. That doesn't help us serve any of the J1 residents that come over during the summer that help to work in our establishments or people who need something shorter than a one-year period. So we're hoping to have a mix of both month-to-month leases and one-year leases. Included in the building is a communal kitchen, a co-working space, a full laundry, a health and fitness center, and we have a cafe. I think Peter included in your package some of the plans. And one of the aspects and amenities that we're offering sort of the town is the front area, as you know, has this white picket fence around it and it's a grass area. We really want to turn that into a community space, a community plaza. And so that's a good part of our design at the front of the building. And then there'll be a cafe at the ground floor of the building, which could spill out into that area so that people who are walking down that part of Main Street, and there's more and more people who are walking down that part of Main Street, will be able to stop somewhere, sit outside, have a cup of coffee, sort of enjoy the view, listen to the bells from St. Patrick's Church. And that's sort of one of the main amenities that we'll have. We'll be completely renovating the inside of the building. So the round part of the building was built in 1969. The addition behind it was built in 1971. The round part, we're keeping pretty much intact. In the center of it, sort of like the center of the donut, will be these communal bathrooms because the rooms that are around the round building are smaller and don't have full bathrooms. So there'll be full communal bathrooms that will be in the round part of the building. The back part, which was built in 71, we're basically demolishing all the interior of that and rebuilding, and that's where the studios and the one bedrooms will go, and the communal kitchen and the co-working space. All the mechanical systems will be replaced. We'll be putting solar panel on the roof. All the mechanical equipment will be all electric. We're trying to get to net zero with this building. We're very close, and that's sort of one of our goals. And to supplement the onsite parking, I work with a company called Envoy. They provide us electric vehicles that are used just for our residents that they can use, and they basically use them on a minute basis. So you rent it by the minute. So if you need a car and you want to go to Boston, it will actually cost you less to use one of these cars, go up to Boston, to the airport, pick up your friends and bring them back. So it's a supplement, so instead of people, everyone having to have their own car, it's something they can use that's always there just for our residents. We'll have electric car charging stations. We'll have electric bikes. So we're really trying to lower the need for onsite parking and lower the need. And most of our residents, we fill out most, but a good portion are people who commute either by public transportation, excuse me, or use their bikes. We see them all over town during the summer, and those are some of the residents that we think that we'll have. The total cost of the project is roughly $15 million. We're acquiring the building for $4 million one, which is $78 a square foot. And I think Mr. Brown knows what it costs to build a new building these days. You know, we're going to spend probably another $100, even more, a square foot to renovate it. We feel that all in all will be into the building for somewhere around $250,000 per unit. And as we know, it costs us much more than that now. Remember, these are just, you know, rooms, one bedrooms and studios, so you can't really compare it to a two- or three-bedroom project, but we think that's what the need is. So we'll create 60 to 70 construction jobs and 30 to 40 permanent employees. So this building will be manned 24 hours a day. If you look at the plans, you come in the front door, there'll be a front desk there, there'll be a person there at all times. We'll have an onsite manager who will live there also. But it runs very much like a hotel in the way of the front desk and the supervision of the staff and the selection of the residents. I previously submitted an expression of interest to Mass Development through their program. That was sort of the first step in this process. They had to agree that what we were trying to do with the property, that we would qualify for the program. And so with your support tonight, we'll be submitting a full application due on June 2nd, and we'll be asking for $1 million that will go towards the acquisition of the building. And I'll probably be back in front of you with a full presentation sometime in the very near future to talk about funds from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund too.
Thank you.
Glad to hear it.
Thank you. Sorry.
I have a question, and I'm sorry I didn't ask this sooner. You probably have already thought it through. Is there any advantage to a local initiative program where you partner with the select board as an affordable housing development?
That would be, that would be processing this as a 40B. And soon as we do that, the advantage of all the units will have to, all the units will have to be, at least on a yearly basis.
Oh, okay. That's why you didn't go that way.
So we're trying to, we're trying to be as creative as we can in order to get what we think that we want with this particular piece of property. And that's why it's, we're not 100% clear exactly how we're going to permit this. We've talked all the time about the commercial accommodation with the restrictions on it. And, you know, we're looking at whether or not we have to go to the ZBA or not. So all that's going to be sort of worked out over the next few, over the next few weeks.
And any luck with the onsite parking? Is there anything the town could do?
We're getting closer. You know, we're dealing with the church. It's almost like dealing with the pope. It's not quite. It's with the bishop in Fall River. I'm a former altar boy there. My aunt Tilly, who had the diner next door, you know, always served the people who went to the church looking for help. So I've used all those to get them to allow us to use their back parking lot. They have 45 spaces back there. We nearly need 35. That's the very back parking lot. And truthfully, I don't see that we'll really use that many parking spaces. I think we have enough onsite with all the other amenities we're going to have. But we're trying to meet a regulation that I think everyone on the planning board agrees needs to be taken a look at.
Yeah. I think you, I highlighted a real hole in our zoning.
Yeah. Yeah.
We, I know that the board has read the letter from Michael Caspary, the president of the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, who wrote a very supportive letter. And there's one sentence in here I really like that, "Your plan is bold yet simple." And he certainly outlines the need for a project like this. Any other questions or comments? Remember, he's looking for support for the application. Any comments? Mr. Mascali?
Just a question. Could you give the board some idea of other similar projects such as this?
That I have done?
That you've done or that you're aware of that have been successful in accommodating business need?
Probably the closest that I have done is a property that I have in Sacramento that I still own with my partners and stuff that was built brand-new from ground up. 127 rooms, all 100% affordable, tax credit project. It has hardly any vacancies ever. I mean, the people, it becomes their home. And the ones that, I started off my development career with my partner, who I've had for almost 40 years now, Jim Barone. We built a similar property in downtown San Diego in the Little Italy neighborhood, 50 rooms on 5,000 square feet with no parking. So that's, that's very dense, and we had people who are still there from when we built it in 1986. So it's, even though it looks transient, it becomes home to a lot of people. There are a lot of people who enjoy living in this type of environment. We include all those amenities that we have, the communal kitchen. You do get a little kitchenette in your room in the studios and one bedrooms that have folk kitchens. And, you know, locally here, there's a hotel that's been built, it's a hotel, but it has very similar accommodations. It was an old YWCA in the south end of Boston, not south Boston, but in the south end. It's called the Revolution Hotel. Very small rooms, smaller than what we have. And the bathroom's down the hall. Very well-run, very clean, very accommodating, very sort of hip and very affordable. So those are sort of the ones. But there is some, there is a new project being built from the ground up in P-Town that's going to be somewhat similar and more of a dormitory style. So we're starting to see more and more of these type of developments here. You know, there have been called a lot of things over the years, SRO, single-room occupancy, you know, hotels. Now they're micro-units, so it's got a new name that goes along with it. But I know that Portland, Maine is developing a new one. So we're starting to see it because you can get the density and get the units that we want, and it serves those folks who don't need anything more than just a nice, clean place to live, single room.
Any other questions?
It's an upgrade from the old rundown motels that are just becoming de facto apartments because of their, you know, lack of desirability as a hotel, because if they get older, people don't want to go, so we've got a few of those too around here.
Yeah. And I'm sure you know that we have, you know, some of our workers, I know a number of the people who work in the restaurant community, you know, some of their workers live in the summer. Seven young leaders to one of those hotel rooms, you know, and they share one bathroom and stuff. So when I pitched this idea to them, when they first turned about the shared bathroom, that's when they told me about how they currently live, so it'd be a big upgrade for them.
Mr. Johnson Staub, do you have any comments from your report on this project?
You know, I think Mr. Glaso's covered it pretty thoroughly. I sort of anticipated the board might ask the question, can we vote this letter of support given that the project is not fully funded? I think the answer to that question is yes. This is simply a letter of support to a state grant.
And you do mention that, that we can approve it while the site plan approval is pending. So I think that's a really good point. So anything from the board?
I would move that we issue a letter of support for this project highlighting the need for affordable housing in Falmouth and the fact that we've got to try everything we can think of, and this is just one more good idea.
A second then. Okay, we have a motion and a second to submit a letter of support for this project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And there is a draft letter in the package.
I was going to ask that question. Is that the letter?
Yeah. Wish we could do more.
Good start. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Vote to approve request from Wendy Y. Hill, trustee of 75 Nashewina Street Nominee Trust, owner of the 75 Nashewina Street, to apply for a grant of license for invasive species management within the layout of Nashewina Street and on the abutting property to the north owned by the town of Falmouth. Mr. Claw, are you here to represent the applicant?
I am.
Okay, we have five minutes.
I hope not to use nearly that much. I am here tonight representing Wendy Hill, trustee of 75 Nashewina Street Nominee Trust, the owner of that property. In addition to that property, there's a parcel directly across the street, across Nashewina on West Falmouth Harbor that they own, that they've received approval from the Conservation Commission to undertake invasive species management. As part of that, they'd like to also take care of the property, which is owned by the town of Falmouth, just to the north of theirs as well as the stuff, plants and the street layout. And the town recently went through and actually clear-cut that area in order to deal with some of that invasive species, but that doesn't address the underlying species that remains. So they'd like to undertake that work to have that mitigated.
Mr. Johnson Staub, would you like to comment on this?
So the board will see when we get to the next item that this is a three-step process. So they have to come to the select board for permission to apply to the Conservation Commission to do work on town and property, and now they're back for the select board's approval of a license agreement to go ahead and conduct that work.
And Conservation did issue an approval for both their property and the town's property.
And it looks as though in the Wendy Y. Hill 75 Nashewina, you are recommending approval.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Nope. Just say thanks to the owner for doing the extra work.
Mr. Mascali?
Just a question. Is there any way to get away from this three-step process so that there's not such a duplication seams of effort here?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. You know, the issue is, this is town-owned property, right? And so private citizen Murphy cannot go to the conservation and say, hi, I want to do work on town-owned property. They have no authority to do work on town-owned property, right? So they need, the select board as the owner of the property, needs to say, we're authorizing this private individual to seek a permit from the Conservation Commission to do work on the town's land. And then that's, that's just the, you know, so that's the regular, if you put it in, if you think of it from the context of private property, right? They own it. They would just go to conservation for a permit to do the work. They get the permit and they do the work. But when it's private owner seeking to do work on town property, in order for them to go ahead and do that work, the select board needs to authorize a license agreement. I don't know that, the only way I could think of would be to sort of do the two... I don't know that, the only way I could think of would be to sort of do the two, the two Select Board approvals in the beginning, but then, you know, you don't really know what the Conservation Commission's going to do, and you don't know what you're approving. So that's the dilemma.
If I could offer a suggestion, perhaps the Select Board could authorize the town manager to administratively approve the ability to seek permission from Conservation, which would then still come back here for the license approval.
Well, it could cause you a problem, because you might do a lot of work, and then we might say, what? We didn't hear about that.
No, just throwing ideas out there.
I think we're, it's a good idea to think about the process, but I think right now that's not the job of the board. The board right now is to consider whether we want to approve this or not.
And we're not that difficult.
I never said you were. Don't put words in my mouth.
I'd move approval.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, we have the next one. Vote to approve request from Wilkinson Ecological Designs on behalf of Brian Halligan, owner of One Ten Oyster Pond Lane, to apply for the Conservation Commission for invasive species management on the adjacent property owned by the town of Falmouth at Zero Oyster Pond Lane.
So this is that first step. Mr. Halligan is seeking the Select Board's approval to go ahead and submit an application to the Conservation Commission to remove some invasive vegetation.
Can I move that?
Yep, a second.
Still moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. See that? You don't even need a lawyer.
Request for variance to the Sign Code Special Events Falmouth Fireworks Committee banner at south end of Falmouth Heights Ball Field.
Looks fine. I don't know any reason why we wouldn't.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And number eleven, license renewals, twenty-twenty-three seasonal common victor license, Jim's Clam Shack, two-two-seven Clinton Ave.
I move approval.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to the consent agenda. Mr. Johnson Staub?
The licenses and administrative orders on the consent agenda are routine in nature and have been reviewed by staff for completeness. I would note that the Select Board has previously voted to approve the local initiative program to create four affordable housing units at five-thirty-three Woods Hole Road. That's administrative order item D, as well as the local action unit under which a single unit of affordable housing was permitted at four-sixty-two T-Ticket Highway. That's administrative order item E. I recommend approval of all items.
Okay, I will read through them quickly. If you'd like to hold any to discuss, please notify me. Application for change of manager for second-hand dealer license, Cash Point, located at three-forty-eight East Falmouth Heights. Application for change of manager for a lodging house license in on the square located at forty North Main Street. Application for special one-day Walt, I always say that wrong, wine and malt liquor license, Ashley Waddington Civil War Plot Dedication Ceremony, Oak Grove Cemetery, forty-six Jones Road, Saturday, six-ten-twenty-three, with a rain date of Sunday, six-eleven-twenty-three.
I just have a question about that one, not that I'm interested to hold it, but just to understand, why do we have to approve that? Are we part owners of Oak Grove Cemetery or something?
No, because they need a special one-day alcohol license.
Oh, for liquor, right.
You've got to have booze. We have to have that.
I'm part of that event, Mr. Brown, so I'll make sure everybody's doing the right thing.
So whenever there's...
No.
Okay, application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Shipwrecked. Shipwrecked Cornhole Tournament, two-sixty-three Grand Ave, Shipwrecked and Heights Hotel Parking Lot. And there is a change, and we received it from Diane Davidson this afternoon. It's a change to six-eleven-twenty-three with no rain date. So it will actually be on Sunday, six-eleven-twenty-three, no rain date. So there is a change there, and I do have a copy of the change of the license request if anybody wants to see that. Okay, application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Gray Matter Marketing, Cape Cod Brew Fest, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Saturday, nine-twenty-three-twenty-three. Administrative orders, appoint member to the Board of Registriers, Virginia Appel. Appoint inspectors of animals, Jessica Gao, Christopher Anglin, and Molly Mason. C, approve the updated public comment policy. Hope everyone's had an opportunity to look at that. Authorize the chair of the Select Board to execute the regulatory agreement for the Lighthouse Station, five-thirty-three Woods Hole Road. Authorize the chair of the Select Board to execute the regulatory agreement for four-sixty-two T-Ticket Highway. And approve the town manager contract. Do I have a motion to...
I'll move it.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The one piece I would ask, Mr. Johnson Staub, is that now that we have approved the updated public comment policy, I'd like other chairs of other boards to see that, if you could send that out.
Distribute that.
Yes. Please, and would you begin with the council on aging? That was a request. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the minutes. Mr. Patterson. Oops.
He said they were fine.
Okay, beautiful, let's move.
I don't remember seeing anything, but I'm going to take another quick look.
Did anything stand out to anyone?
I didn't make any comments online. So I'd move approval.
I'll second it. Yeah, I don't have any notes on it either, so it's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting, public session, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, town manager's supplemental report.
I will be brief. Board members are aware that I made a conditional offer of employment to Chief Jeff Laurie of Westboro for the chief of police for the town of Falmouth. I'm not going to elaborate on that decision tonight. I will have more to say about that after the background check is completed and is on your agenda for action. I do want to remind the board that we have Memorial Day ceremonies this coming Saturday. That's at, sorry, on Memorial Day, let's make that Monday, Memorial Day. There is a procession that begins at nine-forty-five. We're asked to arrive at nine-thirty, and the ceremony begins on the library lawn at ten a.m. And then your upcoming meeting schedule, you have a meeting next week, June fifth, and then there is a break for Juneteenth, and you meet again June twenty-sixth. You then meet in July, July tenth and twenty-fourth. And the June fifth meeting is the meeting at which you do the reappointments, so we will be starting that a half hour earlier.
Excuse me, where's the meeting on Memorial Day? Where do we meet at nine-thirty?
The Village Green.
At the Village Green, okay.
What time are we thinking about starting June fifth?
We, six o'clock.
Okay. And unfortunately, I will not be at the Memorial Day event, as I will not be in the state. And I did let Julie Caddigan know that. It'll be the first time I've missed it. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Select Board reports.
Aye. What did you do last week? I will report that I did attend Senator Sumurian's Substance Use Commission Roundtable again, and it was really interesting to hear all the different angles that people are using to try to address this complex issue. And the Plymouth County Sheriff was up there to explain how he's working with the rehabilitation program that he has, and I guess he and Sheriff Buckley are very in tune with the treatment part of it, and, you know, the fact that you really have to get a program in place, not just in the facility, but some follow-up afterwards. And there was a lot of people there from other various groups that are engaged in that follow-up. So it's good to hear that this system is sort of getting to be really a network. There was a lot of good ideas shared, so a little, little bit more progress on a difficult subject. I also attended with Mr. Scott Price, the meeting at the Tony Andrews Farm, which was pretty interesting to hear. So many enthusiastic people about farming, and some young folks that I mentioned to Peter earlier, that were really hopeful about the opportunities that vertical farming can produce. So that was interesting, and... Nice place, isn't it? Yeah, it's great. Jeff did a great job with that.
I can't wait to go for strawberries. I've never done that.
I attended that as well.
And I used to go there with my mom. She would say, eat as many as you can while you're picking them. I did also attend two of the Steamship Authority's strategic planning meetings. They had one week and a half ago that was, you could only attend virtually. They had the, the meeting was in public with the port council meeting, and then the public could view on Zoom. And I did attend another meeting today that was with the strategic consultant that they've hired to try to recraft their strategic plan, and I gave a lot more feedback about, first of all, the fact that the public comment was at the end of the virtual meeting. There was no chat function, and they're having a meeting about public outreach and public participation, and I was sitting there watching the computer, unable to participate. I made that point today, and the meeting ended at four, and I had another meeting at four, that virtual one, so I wasn't able to get to that public comment at the end. But I was able to today share with the consultant the fact that when they changed the open meeting, or they, they sent a new reminder about the open meeting law, and that you can't regulate public comment, and how I somewhat jokingly mentioned, oh, well, we can just stick public comment at the end, and we won't get any. And of course, all the other board members corrected me and said we would never do that. And I said, but here, here the Steamship Authority is actually doing it. So I was able to have my say today a little bit on some of those, and I mentioned some of the other strategic initiatives that I think that we might be overlooking our opportunities right now with regard to looking at New Bedford. As you may know, I don't know if I reported this, but the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee hasn't met since March, and it seems to be kind of just out of standstill. Maybe some of that might be due to the fact that they were hiring this professional consultant, but I found it troubling that it just kind of stopped when we were just getting to the, what I think was the good stuff, talking about New Bedford freight, and, you know, we spent the whole first year getting to know each other and understand different perspectives, and when we finally got to the heart of the conversation, the meeting sort of stopped. So that was very disappointing to me, and I hope it gets reinvigorated, but right now that's where we're at.
Same day that we did the Tony Andrews Farm, we also did the fire station.
Right.
We were coming for the Hatchville Fire Station, and I thought that was a really well-done event, very exciting, and I'm very excited for, for public safety with that getting off the ground.
Thanks to the voters for supporting that override, huh?
That's huge.
Here, here.
Huge. Ms. Scott Price?
So I attended both of those events as well. I also attended the fire department awards ceremony, which was very nicely done. So it was honoring the retirees and the new firefighters that were coming in and those that had been promoted. I also attended the tree planting ceremony for Jeremiah Pearson. That was on Main Street, which was a very nice event. And I was supposed to walk in the Walk for Hope yesterday, but I just wasn't feeling well, so I didn't. But I know that Kim Fish was there, and I think some other people from the town participated just to show support for affordable housing. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, I met with Mark Hinner, and he mentioned it already, but talking about ADUs, the bylaws, and some of the things that ended up coming up in the presentation by Ed tonight about using town properties and whatnot.
Thank you. Ms. Zansky?
Committee assignments, are we going to do that next time?
That's on my list.
Okay, nothing, I have nothing.
So in terms of future agenda items, I do want to talk about committee assignments, our roles, how, how we want to structure that, potentially structuring that differently. I also would like the board to consider a clerk for this board. And lastly, we, as we talk about meetings moving forward, we really do need to think about a meeting to look at our strategic plan as an update, just to keep it alive, make sure that we are structuring meetings to address issues that are in our strategic plan and have been identified. So those are my suggestions for upcoming. Any other, any other agenda items for future meetings that anyone would like to suggest?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one other thing. Thursday is the Citizen of the Year event for Nell Field. I'm not sure if I can make it, and I know they want a select board member there. I talked to Doug.
I've already signed up.
Oh, okay, great. Well, we know for sure somebody will be there. Oh, your first thing's going to be something really fun.
Something I hate to miss.
Yeah, okay, well, I, you know, Doug was saying that he couldn't find the invitation for that, and I realized I couldn't find it either, so I think I might have just knew that it was a thing. I don't know.
I just went on the chamber website.
Chamber website.
To register.
Yeah, you look up there and you register. I'm not sure that we got necessarily...
You may not have. I didn't pay attention to the fire department's event, so I wish I had paid attention to that, so.
Anything else in terms of upcoming, future agenda items? Okay, if there aren't, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.